Bring the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the South Burlington School Board Meeting for May 4th, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Excellent. All day. Any comments from the public regarding any items not on the agenda? All right. Any amendments to the agenda?
No. We're good.
Beautiful. Look how good we're doing. Student representative and announcements.
So let me just do the announcements. They're at your place. I won't read them all. Again, I think maybe the important one is just to highlight them. This coming Saturday, May 7th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Rick Marcott is the another master planning and visioning community meeting. Those that can't make that one can also plan to attend Tuesday, May 24th, 6:30 to 8:30 at The Orchard School. We have a play going on at the middle school. And again, pay attention to the specifics on that, the musical of Oliver. And then we put some other things on upcoming events on the calendar for you from Chamberlain, the elementary schools as well. And one important one, although it is right around the corner, the 5th, which is tomorrow, the spring celebration for our mentoring program from 3:00 to 5:00. Certainly welcome to come by. We're going to be doing some, they're doing some things both in the cafeteria and in the gym to celebrate those really strong and wonderful partnerships. So that's all I have, but I know, Marley, maybe you want to give a little update too on other things.
Yeah, well, I'm excited to be back. I know I've been gone for a little bit, but basically just an update like on my life has been that I was out for surgery of my mouth for a few weeks. And then I was traveling through Singapore in California to make college decisions and last Sunday committed to a school in Singapore, which I'm very excited about.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And yeah, that's, I'm excited to be back and help the junior representative, which will be coming to us very soon, kind of be the senior representative next year. So that's, that's all I have to share.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Marley. Do you know if you'll be with us for the next couple of meetings or not?
I will.
Awesome. Good. Thanks. So we had this flag for action, but do we?
The reason it's action, sorry, is because Elizabeth and I met with Isaiah Hines, who is the was the candidate for school board and we would like to recommend to the board that we bring Isaiah on as our representative for next year. Hopefully for the end of this year and next year. We thought he was a good, great match for us and we think he'll have a good time and learn a lot from all the good work we do.
Great. So is that a motion?
It's a suggestion. It's not, oh sure, I'll make it a motion.
Make it a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion on Isaiah? If those all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Welcome, Isaiah, if you're watching. All right. City and school collaboration discussion. So I can offer at least that David and I met with Helen and Kevin. And most of what we would have shared about that was probably discussed at the steering committee meeting, so that would be repetitive. So is there anything you would add to that, David? I don't?
No, I think, you know, we identified a frequency of the need. I think we're getting into more and more substance on our steering committee meetings. I think that was evident by the last meeting and it's not just a a meet and greet and say a few things, but we're getting into some pretty complicated items. And I think certainly that was indicated at that evening. And so that's in part connected to the work, as you said, Pat, that we're doing with Helen and Kevin. And really trying to think about how we can continue to advocate on both sides, school board and city, to keep things, keep everyone informed.
Right. And the only things that I, the two, a couple of things that I took away that I thought were really important from that steering committee meeting and the meeting with Helen and Kevin was the, there is going to be work on Market Street next summer, is I think what they're predicting right now. They've talked about right of ways, which it sounded like is not going to impact necessarily our school, but it might. And then we just kept, wanted to keep the door and the conversation going with the city council about any of our options as we look at master planning and visioning and how we can utilize the whole city development work together to maybe save the citizens money. So we want to keep that dialogue going as, as often as we can.
I think it was good to get the update on the tax increment financing. I think every time, you know, you get a little bit more and they've done more with some of their planning too. So I know the public, we had some public engaged folks that had some questions after and asked some really good questions, so effective. Our next meeting, I don't, we have another meeting coming up next month with Helen and Kevin as well.
Later, later this month, yep.
Yep.
Excellent. Any other discussion or questions about that? If not, move on to agenda items seven through 14.
Okay, this is the pension actuarial report. In this audit that just finished, June 30, 2015, the district was required to do some new disclosures. And in order to get those done, a few things had to happen. One was future planning had to work to get another actuary that had the qualifications to do this. So this is a plus for the district in that we have we have more expertise in the actuary area, but it costs more. But a couple of things that have happened because of this Gatsby 67 and 68 is KMS actuaries submitted a bid, we accepted it. They were able to pull in information, like we talked about a few years ago, from the investment side, from the audit side, from our operations, and put together analysis that has more depth to it. And and will be consistent with other plans that you compare. One example of that is the state of Vermont's plan for teachers. In our audit book, you, you'll see instead of a mention that there is a teacher's plan, there's probably 15, about 10 pages of footnote disclosures about the teacher's plan. Same with ours. So our audit book now, instead of being 90 pages, is 120 pages because of this. But it goes with the responsibility of having our own defined benefit plan. And on the write-up I sent to the board, there were, this, there was some information that I summarized that we have basically 77% funded asset position over net pension liability, 77.82%. And and our net pension liability is $2.3 million. One thing that this report has in it that didn't have before, and I'm glad Mr. Fleming's here because we've talked about this before, is what if your assumption is we change the assumption that we kick it up a percent or down a percent. So right now, our assumption is 7% return on investments. Our net pension liability at 7% is this $2.3 million. If we said, let's, let's relax that a little bit. Let's, let's only shoot for 6%. Our net pension liability would have been $3.8 million. And on the other end, if we said, we're going for 8%, we're going full bore for that, our net pension liability is $1.1 million. So net pension liabilities over time, we, we have eight, almost $9 million in the bank. Our net pension liability at this point was $10.5 million. And our, our service cost every year is $383,000, so we have plenty of money. If, for instance, we're going out for a bond issued, $2.5 million, we're going to have to collect that every year from taxpayers. We don't have $1.8 million and we're, you know, 60% funded or whatever. So it's we're, we're not, we're not 100%, but this at least gives us a consistent measure to look.
So John, is this, this is a new standard, a Gatsby standard or whatever? So this is now KMS is someone that we're going to be paying on a regular basis through financial planning?
No, we're going to go through future planning.
Oh, okay.
There's still, there'll still be our third-party administrator?
But it'll be an extra cost?
Yes. But they reduced their side too.
Okay.
So the extra cost was, was $9,500 this year, mostly because of timing. It'll be $6,500 next year. And it's a five-year deal, so it'll be an increment there.
Okay. Thank you.
So I wanted you to know about that because it's there's, there's a host of information in here that we didn't have before and it talks about plan participants and all that kind of thing, so.
Dan?
So Johnny, in the past, I've asked the question about how many years of coverage do we have if we weren't to put any more money in?
Right.
Have you made that calculation this year?
We made it twice. We made it right before you left, left the board and it was 11. Because our annual payment out is, is not that high yet, it, we're, we've actually added two years since then because of the returns in March and part of April. But that, that varies, you know, it's just.
So it's, has it gone from year to year? Has it, do we stay stable or?
It's pretty stable since, since we first started looking at that measure.
I personally think that that's a more indicative parameter as to how many years do you, is it before a crisis is lurking in front of you?
If you put nothing, if you were to put nothing? You're saying, I mean, if you were to put nothing in, that's a better measurement. How many years could you sustain, you're saying?
Well, I think whatever you put in, I personally think it's a better measure than this question. How, how far down the road does, does a potential crisis wound?
Right.
I mean, assuming of course that these funds are reserved so that they don't, aren't touched by anything else.
Right.
So the question is the additional cost. We, we have a contingent line in the budget. This year's the only year we've had it. It's just because changeover in the business office. So there's money to, to cover this. So that's
And what, I guess my question was, what is our total cost for administering? So future planning associates, KMS and SEI, like what is our total cost for, for managing the money and administering the plan every year?
Well, and Patrick Blizzard from SEI is here, he'll go through that, but that's, it's about $40,000 a year for that. Investments and they do, they act as the trust and they do our payroll and all that. So it's not just the investment side. And with this change, it's $16,000 to future planning. So it's those two together. So there's no other action, I mean, no action.
Right. Any other questions on that item?
Item number eight is retirement investments and I did want to show you a graph of where we were back to in February of 2009 with the crash and I think Mr. Fleming, Dan, if we had done the calculation you talked about back then, we would have been in around eight years of, of reserves. But our, our investments have grown steadily. We went from $3.1 million in February of 2009 until just under $9 million now. We changed to SEI, that joint RFP with the city, we changed to, SEI to manage our investments in September 1 of 2013. And and our funding level over time since 2008 has increased from 60, 61% up to right now it's about 78%. So, and once again, those, those those vary and it's a point in time, but some of these indicators are pretty good. We have, meet with Pat Blizzard and usually bring Jim with you.
John Waite.
John Waite, yes, yes. So regularly, but not at the board level. And Pat's here to talk about where we are now. He'll go through the, the relationship review. And we'll talk, I, I did a little chart in here about maybe reallocating investments. He's got a little bit different tonight to talk about, maybe some options. I have a view that we would take action on this at the next meeting. So just hear what Pat has to say now.
Pat, do you mind? Yeah, come on out.
Okay, thank you for having me here. I apologize with my last name. I was up here last week and a snow followed me and now the rain's following me, so.
Don't do it again.
My last name is Snow. So I'll move ahead here pretty quickly. There's a lot of information here. You could take time to read it at your own leisure. I'll go through some of the key charts, but I really want to focus on the asset allocation study because it's important that we maintain a well-diversified portfolio and make changes as opportunities arise. Page three, you can read through this. We're actually having a public plan symposium at SEI, so if any of the board members are interested, coming down to see our facility, go through the workshops. We have keynote speakers listed here. You're more than welcome to. I'll send the invite out to John. He can forward it on to individuals and you can come down and see what we're all about down at SEI. On tab one, under tab one, page five, I'm going to focus a little bit of time on this chart. It's, there, there's been a tremendous amount of volatility in the markets. If we go back to August of last year, we had our first correction. We haven't had a correction prior to that. It was about 35 months. Typically, on average, you have a correction every 18 months. Okay, unfortunately, we had our second correction in January and February. So if you tie those two market corrections together, we were in bear market territory for several global indices, 20% in that range down. So that was significant, a lot of volatility. Fortunately, markets bounced back and we saw that more recently through March and April as well. So let's look at some of the indexes on the right-hand side here, just general global indexes. And I'll focus in on a quarter of the more recent period. We saw large caps with a flat return. We saw areas of the markets that have underperformed for the last couple of years come back pretty strongly. I.e., emerging market equity did very well. Emerging market debt had a very nice bounce back from last year. High-yield bonds did well. All the fixed income sectors did relatively well. So that was good to see because those asset classes have been really hurt by what's going on with commodities and global growth concerns. There's a lot of headwinds out there right now. There's concerns around the Fed. You know, when's the next rate hike going to be? They did their first rate hike back in December. 10-year yield was at 2.2. Now we're 179 on the 10-year, so go figure, right? You'd expect interest rates to go up. They just have not. Page six, I just wanted to show the chart on the bottom right-hand side here. You could see that the market did bounce back. Oil had a significant rally of 46% in a very short period of time and the equity markets followed. The correlations are unbelievable right now from oil to the equity markets in general. And you could see the correlations chart in the bottom. The correlations have come up. If you look at just the 10-year average, they were down below .5. When you have a 1, that means the asset class moves exactly like the other asset class, right? So we're moving closer to 1 with most of the, the global indexes. So oil's really driving the markets right now. Moving ahead to page seven. A couple of points I want to make here, and this ties into the advice study that we have. If you look at the upper right-hand chart here, we're looking at global GDP growth estimates. And you could see we're looking at it from a couple of different standpoints, the 2015, 16, and 17 estimates. And you could see they're rising a little bit. They're going up, which is a positive thing. If you look at the world as a whole, we're seeing growth will pick up slowly. It's going to be modest growth. But then you look at some areas out there like China and the emerging market equities, where you're seeing, there are still countries out there like India and China that have 6% to 8% GDP growth. You're not seeing that anywhere else in the developed world. You're seeing 1% to 2%, very low GDP growth. Now fortunately, the way the portfolio has been positioned, we've been heavily weighted to U.S. large caps. And that's been one of the top performers over the last couple of years since we actually started our relationship. But we do believe the valuations in those areas have increased significantly. And we think it's time to take some of that off the table and move into some of these areas, which I just spoke about. Diversify the portfolio more into international, a little bit more in emerging market equity. Increase the high yield and emerging market debt, and I'll get that in, let's skip ahead to page nine. High yield and emerging market debt took a big hit last year because there were a lot of concerns about oil prices. What's going to happen to those, the companies that are actually pumping out the oil? With oil dropping down to $30 a barrel at one point, do they have the capital reserves to continue their business? So there was a lot, a lot of companies actually were fallen angels. They were close to investment grade. They dropped into high-yield bond junk debt. But there was, the market was pricing in a much higher default rate than what was actually reality. And that's why we saw these asset classes, high yield and emerging market debt bounce back nicely. Plus, you're getting additional yield out of those asset classes or you're not going to get anywhere else. Right? If you look at the S&amp;P 500 yield, you're somewhere just around, just under 2%. If you look at 10-year investment-grade fixed income bond, you're below 2%. So there's not a lot of yield out there. And it makes it very difficult to get back to your point, to hit actual assumption rates when they're at 8%. Now, right now, you're at 7 and that's very justifiable. But once you get up into the 8% range and a lot of public plans have 8% actual assumption rates, it's very, very difficult now to hit that because interest rates are so low. Historically, they're up at, you know, historically, you're seeing a 10-year at 4.5%, 5%, now we're below 2%. So it makes it very hard to hit that number unless you take on a tremendous amount of risk. I won't spend a lot of time on the plan performance, but there's a picture here on page 11 of the portfolio. You can see where it's at today. We're going to have some recommendations to make some changes here. Very, very high allocation to large cap, 40%. So that played out very nicely for the portfolio. But there's a lot of risk there. That's, that's too much large cap and we need to diversify away from that. And then you could see core fixed income, that's your investment-grade fixed income bond fund. Then you have that high yield and emerging market debt exposure as well. And within world equity, there's a slice, about 20% of that's in emerging market equity. Page 12, just snapshot of the, the dollars, dollars here. You can take a look at that. Disbursements, income, SEI fees. So you can see it was around $32,000 for the fiscal year-to-date there. And then on page 14, I broke the, there's annualized returns on the top and calendar year on the bottom. And obviously, we've had those two market corrections, so that's pulled down that inception-of-date number pretty considerably. It was much higher than at one point in time. On the gross of fees since inception, we're above the index. We're a little bit below the index, net of fees. But just keep in mind that the fee number we have in here is the entire 67.67%. Is, that's all of our services. That doesn't include just investment management. That's trust and custody, benefit payments. So we're kind of matched. We're putting ourselves kind of in a bad position there because we're matching up against other services that we offer. But we're still hanging in there with the index net of fees on a long-term basis there. Well, since 2013, end of 2013. Page 15 and 16, I will skip a little bit. Actually, I want to point out something on page 15. One of the main reasons for underperformance more recently, there's been a phenomenon that happened in the first quarter with large cap, active large cap managers. About 95% of active large cap managers underperformed the index in the first quarter. It was an incredible phenomenon. What was happening was, if you think of those defensive-type securities like utilities, consumer staples, they have higher yields. Money continued to flow into those asset classes and the valuations were so high, a lot of large cap managers started pulling away from that to go to to go to more value, you know, valuation securities that are, you know, are better valued than those, right? Not trading at a premium. And what happened was because of those trades, the index was in the top decile in peer groups. Where our large cap funds in the 30th percentile, so it's above median, it still really got beat up on the performance side of the equation. So that are about 250 basis points on the year-to-date. So we anticipate the way our fund is positioned, more pro-cyclical. We're in those, we're not in those managed volatility-type strategies. We moved away from them, the defensive strategies. And we think that that will play out nicely going forward. So we'll capture, capture some of that out for that. Of course, I'll talk about the worst fund and I won't talk about some of the, the other ones, but, so we'll move ahead to tab three just to keep this moving along here. Page 19, John already spoke to this. We ran a more recent number. It was around 76.4%. It's, again, this is more of an estimate here. You get the true number from your actuary, but that was the funding status. There's an interesting little chart here on the bottom left-hand side, what we call a hurdle rate. So a hurdle rate says 11.4%. Now, that's the number you need including contributions and investment return to maintain your funding status. Okay, now let's break that down a little bit here. So the contribution's 7%, right? So that's relatively high. So the net hurdle rate for investments is 4.4%. So the portfolio, again, we're shooting for the, over 7% with our portfolio. But if we get 5% on the investments with that contribution rate, you're actually going to increase your funding status a little bit. So I just wanted to bring that up. On page 21, okay, so here's the model portfolios. We're actually making a recommendation to go to Portfolio A today and I wanted to show you two other portfolios. One is a de-risking portfolio. So that's moving down out of those growthier assets, down from 67 to 55. And then I showed a more aggressive portfolio, Portfolio C, we're moving from 67 to 75. Just so you can see what the risks and return trade-offs are. So pretty significant moves here. We've been in the strategies since inception. And you could see, we're moving away from large caps as a whole. So 6% from the active strategy, 6% from the indexing strategy. And we're spreading that over into other asset classes. We're actually reducing small cap as well. So we're reducing the whole U.S. side of the equation. And we're moving that into world equity and bumping up high-yield bonds and emerging market debt. Now, you're probably thinking, they sound a lot riskier than the U.S. side of the equation, right? So let's take a look at the risk metrics. And if you go down to the bottom of page 21, we have short-term returns. That short-term return is a 10-year number, okay? That's a 10-year projection. Because of interest rates being so low, that's much lower, right? If you go over a 50-year time horizon, which is more realistic for a plan like this, we can support that 7% return, okay? Right now, we can actually support an 8% return net of fees in current portfolio. So if you move to Portfolio A, not a lot happens with the expected rate of return. But you actually reduce risk. The standard deviation goes from 13.2 to 12.8. Okay, and just our best thinking right now is, with the way valuations are, Portfolio A is a better portfolio. It's been great for you in the past, the, the current portfolio, but we think it's time to start diversifying, take advantage of some of the opportunity sets that have arisen in the marketplace. The fee impact, you can ignore that. We're not going to increase the fee with this portfolio. Okay? Even though there are some more expensive asset classes in it. And I just want to show this in a couple of different ways. Let's just focus on page 23. These are distribution charts. Okay, so you can see that the median return is 8% in your current portfolio. You could see what happens moving into Portfolio A. So what we're actually doing by moving to Portfolio A is we're actually squeezing the bar closer together, right? So the bar's not as wide. When you increase risk in a portfolio and you want to shoot for return, you're going to see a bar like Portfolio C, where you have a lot more upside potential. But the downside potential as well, okay? So the 31, so you could see the downside on Portfolio A actually improves a little bit. And we're just losing a tiny bit of the upside, but we're maintaining that 8% number. So we're reducing risk a little bit with this portfolio. Any questions around that?
So if we looked, you know, the chart that was the hurdle rate going back there. Tying the recommendation of Portfolio A to the hurdle rate is, how, is that something you can do or is that?
We want to exceed that net hurdle rate.
Okay.
Because that's just to maintain your funding status. We want to get it to 100%.
Maintaining meaning keep the same asset level or keep the same funding level?
Keep the same funding level.
Okay.
76.4%.
Yeah, okay.
So our recommendation today is Portfolio A on page 21.
So I have a question, John, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I think it's for John, but you can chime in anytime. I think when we hired SEI, if I'm remembering this right, so just help me if I'm not, that we talked about having an investment committee?
Right.
Did we ever do that?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
No, the committee's been basically
You.
No, Andy and Sue Spear.
Okay.
And they were real active, actually.
Okay.
But, no, we haven't done, done that.
Okay, I just, just occurred to me. Thanks.
That's actually in the audit recommendation too, so all fits together.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So because we haven't done that, we're here, you know, need the board's approval.
So it's a little hard to think you want to change this because we like the results, right?
Right.
So, but you're saying A versus, tell us what would happen if we went with like B?
Well, if you went with B, you would, you would reduce your return, right? So, because with B, you're moving into fixed income and fixed income has very low interest rates right now. So you're not going to get a lot of juice out of it. You're going to have lower returns. You may be even adding risk in the short term, even though it doesn't show it in the longer term. Because if interest rates Because if interest rates do go up, you're going to lose money on the fixed income side.
And are you, is this kind of Portfolio A what you suggest for all municipalities?
It's different for everybody.
Okay.
It's a little bit different for everybody. We have very large municipalities. They may be in alternative asset classes, things like that, which don't make a lot of sense for a $9-million portfolio.
Right.
But the weightings are similar. So if you just take out alternatives, you're going to have a very similar weighting for, for all the public plans.
And how often do you suggest change? Like, it hasn't been changed for a while.
Right. Typically, we do at least once a year.
Okay.
And Patrick's been talking to us in, within the business office there about making a move like this last year.
Okay.
We talked about it, and same concern, where, wow, emerging markets, we don't know that much about it.
Okay.
So we didn't do that, but we haven't left it off the table, and, and it's, you know, that's, that's why this is not the first we've heard from SEI about it.
And Pat, do you have a sense about a recommendation for us in terms of, should we have a committee, an investment committee, that makes decisions like this, you know, with representation from the community? And I'm just curious about what you see in other places and...
Yes, I absolutely see that everywhere.
Okay.
I think that's very important, you should have an investment policy statement. I think we have a...
I think we have a policy statement, yeah.
Yeah, we do have an investment policy statement, we did that together.
Right.
You know, that's absolutely very important. Now, you hired SEI, you know, take advantage of our best thinking.
Right.
We make a lot of changes behind the scenes, you're not seeing within the funds. We're changing managers, we're changing weightings, things like that, on your behalf. So that's all been going on the entire time. It hasn't just been a static portfolio. But yeah, absolutely, it's, it's important to have several different parties there. Not just, from a fiduciary standpoint, to monitor us.
Right.
Cover themselves from a fiduciary standpoint as well.
You got one? Dan?
Dan, go ahead.
So I have a question. If I remember things correctly, the group that we're concerned about retiring here is now a fixed population, and it's not going to be added to as time goes on. Is that correct?
That's right. As of September 2013, no, no new employees go into this plan, and they go into the defined contribution plan.
So the way I view that is that we have a bubble of liability that's going to come, and then it's going to dissipate over time. Has that been factored into this thinking? I mean, we don't have the usual situation where there's a population continually adding into this thing.
You know, it's been factored in from the actuary side, so the, so the percent, the net pension obligation, it's, it's all in there, because it would be much worse if we had added three more years of employees into it. So yes, it's, from that standpoint, it's added in.
So I'm just wondering if it affects the investment strategy in any sense?
From a, from a risk?
Yeah, we certainly take that into account, and that's why we have these slides here. If you look at slide 19, you know, we're taking, we're looking at, we're working with your actuaries to get all this data that puts us together, and we take that into account when we're building these portfolios. That's why I mentioned earlier that some portfolios are a little bit different, and we have plans that are much worse off than you. We have plans that are 100% funded. So, you know, that, that does change our decision-making slightly from an asset allocation framework.
So, the defined contribution money, is that going into, into this at all, or do we have something separate set up for people, or do...
We have 403B plan that we modified so that support staff, after a year of vesting, receive a 4% contribution of their salary.
Right, but and where does...
It's, it's just, it's just operating expense year to year. There's no...
No, I understand that, but, but do they just invest wherever they want? Or do we provide a vehicle for them to invest?
State of Vermont plan.
Handled by...
State of Vermont 403B plan through...
We, we're out of that.
Yeah.
We get out of the management.
Right, okay.
All right, thanks. That's the question.
We have a plan document. We don't allow loans. There's a few separate things, things separate from the state, but it's, it's state-run, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patrick.
So I think that, just to wrap this up, I would, I'll bring this back with, with this recommendation, either to the next meeting or in June, so that there's some closure there, and, and we'll be back in touch.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there something that, is there a reason you said, one of those two? Is there more work to be done, or could it be whatever fits on our agenda, or what's the driver?
Take it to your agenda, too.
Okay, all right.
We're, you'll see a little bit here tonight on our agenda for future, but it's, it's to get on, you know, between now and June, either the June 1st or now.
Okay, thanks.
June 1st or the, May 18th.
Okay. Item 9, then?
So this is the audit report and management letter, and we have Bill Hall here from our HR Smith, who has been the audit manager for our work probably for six years now. And he, he was kind enough to drive here all the way from Maine. He's going to drive home after the meeting, so appreciate him being here.
He loves coming to Vermont.
Sometimes. You have this that I wrote down. Delancey had the copy of this, and number nine, we'll do the next, next. What we've done in the past, and it's okay with everybody, I'll go through a few highlights of the audit first, and then if Bill has comments, great, and then we'll go through the management letter with Bill, too. So, the audit report, very first thing is, was it a clean opinion? Yes. That's, and I reference, if you want to go back to the audit report and check these out, I reference the page numbers. The, a key part for us is the management discussion and analysis, because it's kind of a executive summary of the whole audit. It has most of the key financial statements in it without footnotes and that kind of thing. But it also shows in condensed form, and it also shows things that are affecting us, economic factors that affect the district that may not affect everybody. You know, it's the economy, it's what's going on with the state, state law, with education funding and that kind of thing. So that's, that's where that's part of it. And it's in the audit book, but it's, it's actually management's responsibility, not the auditor's responsibility. And then the fund balances of major funds are listed here. The general fund balance was really high, it ended at $2.2 million. And of this, the unassigned balance was $1,478, and the amount committed is revenue in '16 is $791,000. In our FY '17 budget, we assigned 1 million, is approximately $1.3 million of that fund balance, so it's all being set aside for budgetary use, so...
Which is the state law, by the way.
The capital project fund balances was our repurposed bond. We had money left that we're spending this, this summer, of $766,000. And other governmental funds or special revenue grants, you know, a lot of this is our federal money for IDEA and titles and other grants. And while we had a total fund balance of $341,000, no, let's see, $341,000, we had an unassigned balance of $30,000. So when we budget, it's a bit tricky because we combine our general, general fund and special revenue funds, and we mark that pretty much in our budget book, but when the financial statement comes out, most of our budget's in the general fund, but a little bit of it's in the special revenue fund. And you've been helping us with that, try to combine that. And if Elizabeth was here, she'd remember, our auditor told us years ago, put it all in the general fund, so we did it, and then it took us three years to get it out of the general fund. You know, so, we're, we're doing the best we can here. The next part is enterprise funds, which total had a deficit of $9,527. Nutritional services pretty much stayed the same. Schools Out went up considerably last year to $290,000. Months in Field grew to $61,000, and we're going to be expending that on the, on the turf field this, this summer in the, in the project. And Pension Trust Fund, we're talking about a whole bunch of different dates here. Our plan year is October 1st, 2014, which is what the KMS report is. The audit report, the balance sheet had $8.2 million in it. Patrick's investment said about 8.7, and I'm telling you, it's 8.9, so it, it changes daily. But anyway, it's shown in, it's easy to see on our financial statement. And then our debt summary, bonds, leases accrued payroll decreased by half a million dollars, and we had an outstanding bond balance of $2,075,000, leases of 905, compensated absences of $39,000, which is great. Most, a lot of municipalities especially have a lot, a big number there. And then our net pension liability shows up here. It didn't show in past, it was there, but it didn't show in, on the books like this before, so...
Can you, can you just explain what compensated absences are?
It's essentially if someone leaves and they have sick, sick leave and that kind of thing.
Gotcha.
Vacation, and we don't really have much of that accrued. Most of this is just because of timing, when the last payroll is, that kind of thing.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah. On the next page, I, I know it takes a lot of work sometimes to get these federal funds down to have no findings or no major findings, and so I always highlight that. It seems like there weren't any internal control findings or question costs, that kind of thing. So, and we had a, we also had two other outside audits. The IRS came in and audited the whole year of 2012, and we just had a minor reclassification of a couple positions. And we had a IDEA follow-up from the state, and those are federal funds review, and we came out clean after that. So that was pretty good. And then finally, there's a little questionnaire that's required by the State of Vermont. It's a checklist in your packet, and we've decided, it has to be done by December 31st each year, but we decided to do it with the audit report every year, to go through this checklist, so that it's, we know it's done, and then we can file it away or take care of the problems that are on it. So that's why you see this here. There weren't a whole lot of changes. I don't think there's anything of real concern on here, but...
Except for we haven't attended any financial trainings.
I, I, you know, I haven't, I didn't know if you, I didn't know if you did, so I left a blank. And it actually says, have, have you attended a training, trainings on record-keeping? Well, I have, but I don't remember when, so...
Yeah, exactly, okay.
So anyway, those are a couple of things, but this, this, this is really, so the board knows what you should be looking for. This is in the Tom Salmon auditor era, when all the embezzlements came to light. They, he worked really hard on this to get this as a, and it went through the legislature to have to do this checklist, so, so it's not a surprise to the board, or hey, what are our responsibilities? So that's, that's the reason this sheet's here.
Can you just speak on the, the W-9 question for vendors? That's no.
Right. We don't have a number, a W-9 on file for every vendor. We haven't gone through that process to check.
Is that a big expectation that we should, that we're not meeting, or just trying to get my head around that?
So, you know, having a W-9 on file for all vendors, what it does is it gives you backup, in case the IRS ever came and say, why did this company get, you know, a 1099 and whatnot? Because the W-9, the W-9 will tell you whether or not they get one or not. So if, if you are not, you know, sending out a, a 1099 every year to a client because this W-9 says he doesn't need it, but then he does, it'd take you off, it'd take the legality off you and put it on the person who filled out the W-9.
So at this point, it would be a best practice, but it's not a requirement?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. Dan?
So just related to the same checklist, I have no idea whether a yes or a no is the right answer. Is yes always the right answer?
No, yes isn't always the right answer.
Are there any answers in here that present potential problems for the district that the district ought to be aware of?
I don't remember any, but I, I have to take a minute to look.
That was the same lens that I was asking that question under.
That's why you're asking that.
Yeah, yeah, I had kind of looked through it.
I just expanded it for all listeners.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And the other thing is, I'd like to go back, ask a couple of questions about the enterprise fund. You've shown a chart in here on pages 22 to 24, it's listed as, that aggregates these things. Is the district free to aggregate them?
No, that's just for...
That was my question.
Yeah, it's, it's just to...
We can't move money between the funds.
No, no. No, it's just a simple, I, I wanted to make this, try to be one page, and I made one and a half page of summary, that's all. That's, that's what it looks like.
So then, if you take these, these things like the schools out and Munson that show some substantial positives?
Right.
What options does the district have for use of that money?
Well, both were set aside for a specific purpose. The Schools Out was set aside to run an after-school program, and...
So do these have future liabilities that this is a reserve against essentially, or
No, I think that the, loosely, but Schools Out runs with very few assets. They don't have their own building. They have, they use closets in classrooms that aren't being used at night, so they have very small liabilities as far as that goes. But yes, they're, it, it's, it's basically, fees are collected for a purpose, we should use it for that purpose. That's all.
So if this continues to grow, I mean, just for argument's sake, if this continues to grow at $125,000 a year, and three years from now, it's a million dollars in this thing, what's the district do with that number?
Well, we, we would, we would adjust the fees down, you know?
So, so the one freedom is to make the future users of the system get a better deal and lower price?
Right. Yes, or to play...
And deplete the money that way?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's really what happened. If you remember, you, you've been seeing this for years. The Schools Out fund balance was, was down quite a bit. It went down from $300,000 to $100,000. Most of that was because we didn't raise fees. We had talked about it, I didn't, I wasn't a big fan of raising the fees, I'll be honest with you, so we didn't. But then, then it got down to a point where we were having trouble with nutrition services, and Schools Out was looking like we were going to have the same kind of trouble, so we did raise them. Yeah.
So same thing through Munson Field?
Well, Munson Field, we, we, there's a limited, there's limited revenue that can come there, because it all has to be after-school hours. But we have raised the fees there, because it's, first of all, it's market-driven. If you rent the University of Vermont turf field, it's going to be $150, $160 an hour, just ours is the same. It's, but it's strictly to provide money to upgrade the field and also do maintenance every year.
So when we are, since we're upgrading the turf, we're increasing the fees, right?
We should, we should. We haven't done that yet.
I mean, I don't think it would be drastic, but I mean, I think it's always, it's always, again, part of that, that market...
Yeah.
...analysis that John talked about, and we haven't, I mean, we've had this now for how many years, like, on the Munson Field? We didn't, haven't been doing, we didn't do it for the whole life of...
This is, this is the sixth year that we've had this enterprise, you know, set aside the money.
So let me follow up on Dan's question about Schools Out. So what happens to the, and the, the fund balance that exists today is if tomorrow we shut that program down completely? Not that I'm suggesting we do that, that's not what I'm suggesting, I'm just trying to figure out what happens with that money.
You'd have to make a decision.
You would have, you would have some options. What you'd first do is you'd look when the inception of the fund started and what the purpose of it was.
Yep.
So then if you decided to shut that down and no longer continue that service, what the board could do is probably have an article in one of your, you know, budget years and say, you know, you've got this money out here, we want to use... We want to use it for field upgrades or, or something. It could be used for some, you could also take it and apply it to your, your budget as like a revenue. You know, and lower taxes for that one fiscal year if you wanted to. So you would have options, but most of the time, those options would have to go through a voter.
And those options would only be available to us in those scenarios where we're shutting a program down or something like that?
Not necessarily. I mean, you could take that, you know, revenue, you know, um, if, if it grew very large and you didn't want to, it didn't, didn't need it in that program no more. You could do the same things with it. It wouldn't have to shut down.
Okay.
But you'd always probably have to go to the voter.
We could go to the voter and say, this is, this is a fund that we want to utilize.
Just because when it was set up, it was set up for a certain function and now you want to use it for a different function.
Fair enough. Thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
So while I, while I raised the question, well, what would happen if the funds kept increasing in their balance? I want to just make the lowest statement and that is that I think it would be a wise policy to set some sort of a.
Breaker.
If there's a ceiling, then there's a basement, I guess. Some, some level in which there's a buffer in there in case there are unexpected things to go on.
Right.
To try to avoid what's going on in the nutrition services.
Well, a little, a little bit of problem with that is, is that you're, you're making a, uh, conscious decision that you would be making money in that program. And as a school, you are technically not allowed to make money.
Right.
Well, we have the budget, we have the, we have the balances already. They exist there today.
That's cr, that's correct. Well, what you're telling, what you're saying, at, at least is what it sounds like, is that you want to put a breaker in because y, you're expecting that this program's going to continue to make money and you don't want to go over that break and you want to do something with the rest of that money.
But our concern is that we don't repeat what went on in nutrition services where we started, where we ended up with, I don't know, I guess we're at one point a half a million dollars in terms of the deficit on that thing and we've been scrambling for, since I've been aware of what's going on in this board trying to recover from that. And it isn't making any much progress, okay? It's still, still running negative year to year.
I agree.
So is it, so would it be possible to, not that we're going to do this, but move the money that, that sits in Monson field and put it towards the nutrition services deficit?
You could, just take a vote.
Voters.
Just take a vote.
We could take money from the other, I mean, from the schools out.
Yeah, any enterprise money moved for another place is.
Yeah, and remember, it's not money.
I know.
Physical money. It's just funds.
Yeah.
Don't even get us going on that. Okay.
So can we find out like what a, you know, to what Dan is saying? I mean, what is this? Yes, we're not supposed to be making any money in it and it looks like you kind of are, but is there a floor that you could set? That a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we need to have, no more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a balance in the schools out fund? And if we have more than that, like say a hundred thousand, we can, in our budget, you know, move that money towards nutrition services?
You know, I, I think if you chose to go that way, what you'd probably have to pay more attention to is your fees to your expenses in the fiscal year. Because if you're looking to say that, you know, you want to have a, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund balance and you don't need no more, you don't need no less and you're expecting to have a certain amount of kids in half the school, every year you probably should be adjusting your fees every year so that you're going for that target, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so you're not, you know, building or, or whatnot.
I mean, we have had variability in our schools out program and it's been a consistent, um, program. But we've made some changes. We've added staff. We've hoped for, you know, students coming into the program. We've expanded our license to accommodate the needs. So it's not been just like a sure thing. We, we've had to, you know, strategically think about serving the population. That's, that's the focus here. And then having a, and a right, the right fee structure attached to it. And, um, I know it seems kind of like a no-brainer that it always, it just always keeps bringing money, but we have been doing some, you know, valuable market assessments against, you know, what other people are charging, how we're providing programming, so it's.
Sounds like it's a work of progress still.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I get it. I, we, I don't, part of the reason why we don't do significant increases is we're trying to be really mindful about keeping it a viable program for, for our families and we think it's a really important, um, you know, partnership with our, our educational services.
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to play devil's advocate here. I'm going to be one of the parents of the kids that are in there and I'm going to say, well, how come you, if you have, uh, you know, three or two hundred thousand dollar gain, how come you don't take some of that and give it back to the parents or whatnot? That just paid in, you know, all that money in there. You know, that's the devil's advocate. Instead of, you know, the school side trying to be more conscious with the funds and, you know, making sure that you have enough money to run that program. You know, I'm going to be the debt, the, the, the parent over there saying, well, you made all this money in this program. We paid it all in. How come we don't get a kickback for all the money that's in there? So.
Right. And that, that would make it difficult to say you are, you school choice parents are going to subsidize our, uh, nutrition services deficit.
Right.
But having said that, it still is problematic that on the one hand, we have this two hundred and some thousand dollars in the plus and no, you know, you're a little worried about that because we need to get it adjusted. But on the other hand, we have to go out to the voters on the negative side to, to be funding this deficit and it's all.
Actually, if I remember correctly, and you can correct me, John, if I'm wrong here, um, there was a legal opinion, um, that was given that the board had enough, had the power to transfer the use of unassigned fund balance to this, the food service program without a vote.
There were, there were two directives. One was the directive from the state that said that the district had to fully fund the, um, deficit and, and do it in the next budget year from the general fund. Then we went to attorney Stitzel, who said that the board had that right responsibility, right responsibility and right to leave that deficit there or make that decision.
Right. So they, they didn't need, I don't, I don't think you need a vote from the townsfolk to alleviate your negative fund balance.
But we have been doing that by putting fifty thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that's an appropriation. That's a little different than, you know, taking money from one pot or funds from one pot and alleviate a negative fund balance from another pot.
So you mean we could take money from the general fund and pay off the deficit?
Absolutely correct. I believe you, that's within your power.
But then, but then at the end of the day, we would have that much less money as a surplus to put in.
Absolutely correct.
Budget. So it's the same, in the end, it's the same thing.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, thanks.
Then just like to make the point again, the, uh, the difficulty that I always have with that is that strikes me as taxing the public twice for that expense. Once to pay for it the first time and second to relieve the deficit.
It's not right.
Uh, no, I don't, I don't agree with that.
So. Explain that.
Because technically, so, so first of all, all that money that's in that use of fund balance isn't tax dollars. You save money by, 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 you know, uh, you know, by, well, I won't say cutting services, but by smart spending. And then you've got revenue in from tuition or other sources, you know, more state aid sometimes. So all that money that's in your use of fund balance or the unassigned fund balance isn't all taxed.
It's paying for the lunch as well, you know.
Absolutely correct. Yes.
Well, what Dan is saying is that we've paid the bill once. The vendor, the vendors are all that supply food and the, and the workers have all been paid, so we paid, paid the bills.
Cash has physically gone out of your coffer, correct?
And it's come out of the general bank account.
Correct.
And it shows as a, uh, a def, a debit or a liability to the food service account and an asset to the general fund.
Correct. What, what, what you're saying is, so what happens in, in, in fund accounting now is, you know, instead of having pots of cash everywhere, you know, auditors recommend that you have one, one cash account. So, you know, your, your financial people aren't, aren't reconciling cash all the time. So what, what fund accounting came up with is this thing called due-to, due-from. And what that is, is that is an account that is used to track the ins and outs of cash from certain funds. So currently, if I was to look at your school nutrition, your due-to, due-from says that your school nutrition owes your general fund four hundred and fifty thousand in cash. Okay? So, you know, that number's different than the number that's represented as the net position or your fund balance because there's ARs, there's APs included, so timing. You know, at a certain point, will a fund balance and a due-to, due-from be the same? I doubt it. Because they're always paying bills. They're always, you know, money's coming in, money's coming out. So if, if what you're saying, so finish what you were saying, John.
Well, then, that's the first, the bill's been paid, but the taxpayers have not been billed yet. That, the, the taxpayers haven't paid it. It's, it's been paid from the asset being used from a, for a purpose.
Would have been a carryover otherwise.
So you physically have paid the bills, but you physically haven't billed anyone to pay for that bill.
That's right. We haven't, we haven't recorded an expense.
And I do agree with that statement. I do agree with that statement.
Okay.
So if we would then include.
Because remember, you're in an enterprise fund, so technically you're not really billing anybody for any certain kind of expenses. You're hoping that the fees for, you know, providing a service, food or whatnot is paying for that expense. Problem is right now, that's currently not happening. Your fees are, you know, your revenues are not paying for the expenses that are going out. Right.
So there's no generally accepted accounting principle for an enterprise fund that performs poorly?
Well, there is. Um, you have options. One of your options is to alleviate that and hopefully come up with a better fee structure or better food program so that more kids want to eat your food. You know, another, another, I've seen a couple of other ways. One is that you can remove it from an enterprise fund and call it a special revenue fund. Still going to have a negative fund balance either way if it go, goes that way. Um, I've actually have one school now that their food service program's in the general fund. And if they have a loss or, or, or a gain, it goes right into your unassigned fund balance either way. So then it gets picked up by your net profit or net loss every year.
So if we put all the enterprise funds into the general fund, we'd end up only nine thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Absolutely correct. Over the time of these, yes, correct.
Right.
And that would be a perfectly acceptable thing to do.
It, it, it is allowed. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say I would prefer it that way if I was you. You know, these are funds that you choose to, you know, account for separately. So you could track them and use them for the purposes that they're made for. You know, in the general fund every year, if you have a net gain from one of these, it's gone.
Yeah.
Unless, unless you guys carry it forward or whatever, which is not usually an easier way to doing it. That's why you guys pull it out.
Well, that, that was actually is the first issue on the school, school lunch deficit is the first issue on the management letters where we're headed and.
I heard our food's getting a lot better and we're going to see a lot more kids eating the food next year.
And I, and I think the last time I had, I had a meeting with you all, you know, I blame this on, um, the Obamas because they, they changed those rules, you know, five years ago, you know, making food, you know, in, in cafeterias, they have to be a certain way and, and, you know, the cost went up. You know, and then, and schools didn't have enough time to adjust for that, you know, in their, in their costs or in their revenue projections. Um, you know, a lot of schools now are fumbling, fumbling around trying to either cut costs or, you know, come up with better ways to make money. And it's, it's, it's hard. It's funny that the feds, they, they, they love to put restrictions on your money and say you can only do this, that, this with it, but then they don't give you extra money to pick up the cost for that, so.
Well, they changed significantly the provisions of the food that we were required and it was far more expensive. So in order to comply, there was a, you know, increased cost. Um, they've lax, they've, they've lightened those up a little bit. Because of, I think, some of the, the data that was being shared with, uh, with them around the, the number of students that then are able to participate, so.
Well, David, I.
There's challenges.
David, I bet since the inception of that, I bet food service fund balances have probably doubled in negativity.
Yeah.
That I've seen, so.
Yeah. And we, we've struggled with that again, trying to gain interest at the same time imposing and trying to absorb those costs. So it's at a time when we were working diligently to, to proactively get to the positive, we also had those stressors. And I think the board is aware, at least some of the board members are aware of some of those imposed changes. Far different than our other enterprise funds like schools out didn't have.
Right.
Doesn't have some of those similar, well, they have licensing requirements and things of that nature, but they don't have anything like, uh, the issues associated with food.
But schools out, I don't think schools out dependent on federal funds.
We get some.
Yeah.
A little bit.
You get it. You're not dependent on, you're not dependent, like, like food services.
Right.
So can I ask one other question? The, the nutritional services five thousand eight hundred and ninety-five FY two thousand fifteen change. Is that net of whatever general fund transfer we put in, like fifty thousand?
No, 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 the fifty thousand is included. If you didn't, if you did not, uh, give the food service fifty thousand, you'd have, you'd be fifty-five thousand dollars in all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was a fifty.
And we have fifty thousand for next fiscal year as well, right?
Which is, which is good. It looks like the fifty thousand is a good number. If you're only losing five thousand dollars in that fiscal year and David's telling me that they're still working on making it better, I mean, hopefully you'll see a positive number in sixteen.
Actually, in two thousand sixteen.
Oh, bad news.
The, uh, during the, one of the cost containment's or whatever it was, we reduced that to twenty thousand dollar subsidy this, this current year.
For the year we're in now, but for next year, we're up to fifty.
Fifty or, yeah, fifty, right. There are about seven items on here, um, that, um, we've touched upon, or there've been, um, they're not, um, they're for strengthening internal control and improving operation efficiencies for our, for our district.
Remember, this, this letter that we give you, the management letter, is just, you, so you all know that there's, there's places or controls that you could improve. This, that's all this is. Just a letter saying, you know what, this, this needs to be addressed, you know, this is how maybe we can do it. To be on, I, I, I'm probably the one that put the management letter together and I can't recall everything that's in there. The one big issue that South Burlington School District has to deal with is the food service deficit. That is your biggest issue, I think.
There, there was one thing in here about a combined budget and, and our answer was the Vermont State Guidelines for Chart of Accounts are, are changing and, um, there's some positive work going on at the state level to, uh, the state's hired a consultant to look at all the different financial systems that each of us has to, in order to implement that. And supposedly there's a, some funding coming, at least asked for from the Agency of Education to help this along. And, um, so I'm encouraged that it's not going to take until two thousand nineteen to do this. But, um, uh, it, it, it's something that, uh, we'll, we'll update you again next month. Amy and I went to a, a day-long session, uh, just last week, so.
And John is correct. Um, your AOE has done a lot of changes over the last five years. One of them actually being that they actually require schools now in the state of Vermont to have an audit. You know, that, that was, you know, the no requirement unless you were a single audit. Now every school in the state of Vermont requires an audit, so.
So, uh, um, if there's anything else anybody wants to go through on the audit?
I'm good. Anybody else?
You guys got a great, uh, financial staff. It's a pleasure coming up here every year to work with them. Sorry to hear that someone's retiring, but, you know, everybody retires sooner or later.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Safe drive home.
Both of you.
Here.
Finally, thanks for coming.
Finally.
Yeah, it'll be June twelfth or something, right?
All right. Item agenda ten.
Okay.
Started fast, but we slowed down.
Yep. Important stuff. There's schools out delinquent accounts. I, I just want to say that we're, we're working pretty furiously on this issue. There was a time when, um, schools out was recording their cash with the, just the school district with the business office, but, um, weren't, uh, we didn't see the full accounts receivable and it's been about two years now. We, there were some very heavy receivables then and, um, so we've done research. We've got some people to pay in full. One person had a, an account with a very high balance, who's been paying a hundred and fifty dollars a month. And in three years it'll be paid off, but she's been very faithful. So we have some of those stories and then we have some stories where people just, um, uh, can't pay. And so this is the first time we're coming to the board to write off an account. We, we don't have any authority in the business office. David can't write off an account. So, um, I just want to, uh, say that in here, there's three accounts and, and I, we had talked about four, but at our last meeting, we're just coming to you with three accounts. The total fifteen thousand, three forty-nine, seventy-nine. I'll just give some details, but no names or anything like that. One balance was from two thousand eight to two thousand eleven. It had accrued up to seven thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And, and we had our legal firm look at this. The, the home was foreclosed, uh, the parents have split, the, actually, there was some homelessness involved, so this is definitely not collectible. No matter, no matter in, in what way, shape or form. No matter, no matter in, in what way, shape or form. There's another one like that from the same, um, uh, period of time where the kids are now out of the system. They had subsidy for part of the time, but the part of the time they didn't get subsidy, they, they stayed in the program. And that's four thousand, three thirty-two. And the last one was, um, uh, kids received, they had three kids in the program. They were receiving full subsidy, but, um, somewhere along the line that, that, uh, it didn't kick in until maybe six months into the program. So that's another three thousand, eight forty-seven. So, um, I have details, but I, I just wanna be, you know, respect privacy. And yet, I know in order to act, you have to at least know some details about these, these accounts.
Any questions for John? Well, I get, I mean, as far as a way forward, are we able to, uh, give the business office the discretion to make a determination when it's under twenty-five thousand dollars? Um, 'cause I think that's our spending threshold. I mean, it's kind of the opposite of that, of giving up on pursuing, for instance, the three thousand dollars of somebody who just had a delay for a subsidy. I mean, if, in other words, leave it to the administration's discretion of which ones to write off.
Well, the problem, I, what, I don't understand how it gets to that level.
Well, it shouldn't have.
Yeah.
But it was, it was a fledgling program. If you go back to two thousand eight.
Things of the past.
There were, um, if I'm, and I don't wanna exaggerate, but there were like twenty kids in each school. And, and one director, and, and you see how the program has grown from sixty kids to four hundred and fifteen, I think they said. So the, the growing pains were there and, and, um, there's also a, um, unwillingness to exclude anyone from the program. And that wasn't understood at the, at the Schools Out level as we would understand it here at the board level because, you know, um, the, the rules are in place, the fees are there. So, um, the, the program has grown up, but it needs more support. That's, that's really one thing. And what we're doing now in the business office is kind of a blitz to get it all caught up. But ongoing, there needs to be a bookkeeper at Schools Out to take care of this and monitor this so that the, the director isn't, isn't actually that involved. I think I used the example, if Chamberlain School Principal Ruel was trying to collect, um, tuition or taxes, that's, that's kind of what is the same thing.
So is that now in place?
We, we, we have our committee in the business office and we're splitting it between four of us, including, including me. But no, we need a person to actually work probably for the business office with Lee.
So, I mean, would that, that would be charged to the enterprise fund, which seems like there's plenty of money, at least as we're seeing it, to do that. So that kind of takes care of the going forward, so we don't get into this position again. But going back to my question, is it something that we can do to essentially defer to business office? Or let's say more broadly, administration on determining which ones and at what point we're gonna write off this past debt?
I mean, I think you could, but.
So long as we understand we're fixing going forward.
I don't know, I don't know if that's a good idea, actually.
Well, that's why I'm raising the question.
I think you could, but it's with the monitoring reports, with asset, um, protection, with all the things that we indicate, including the audit report that you just received, I think it's in the best interest to keep it right where it is. And we're communicating with you particularly around enterprise fund liability, um, both nutrition and Schools Out. And that we're being really, I mean, I think we're demonstrating some increased conscious effort around management and some controls, at least from, you know, back to, from two thousand eight to where we are today. Um, we've allocated significant amount of resources out of the business office to kind of correct some of this, as well as working with Schools Out and Nutrition Services to ensure we don't get into a place where, you know, you're, you're, there's some triggers that happen before you get too far behind. And again, to, to John's point, you, you don't want the directors of the programs to say to the student, you can't come here tomorrow, you know. Uh, you, you have to pay or you can't come here. So there's some real sensitivity around that and I think we're, we're doing that a lot better. Although John's point is right, we, we need somebody who probably is side by side in the business office doing a lot of that bookkeeping.
I, I think we, we, Amy is working with a HR director to put that job description together. It, it, it adds FTE, so we're all concerned about that, but it's in the enterprise fund outside the general fund. So it's a, it's a after-school program, it's not, and it is necessary. CVU has a program and they have a halftime bookkeeper outside the business office, but I think that's what this needs. Someone with experience and abilities to say no.
And you can give about a half an FTE or?
That's what we think, yeah.
Do, do people pay in advance for this service?
We started, when we heard about this, we changed a few things. We were billing in arrears, so immediately you get in trouble. So we bill in advance now.
Okay.
Second thing is we put in, uh, debit card payments. And as much as I don't like to put in credit card payments, we, we now have that available too. So, um, and, and we're looking at the accounts, but it has to be someone's full, uh, not full-time, but someone's regular job.
And is the district paying the fees for those credit card transactions?
Well, the Schools Out will eat the, eat the fees, yes, yeah.
So is it? Push any more on that? Well, no, I'm just, what, I'm trying to, I usually have my, my policies with me, but it's, it's two point four, two point five. One of the policies requires reporting, uh, the past due.
Right.
Uh, and this would fall within that, but I don't recall that that policy specifically resolves the question of what, of whether to essentially write off bad debt. I just, you know, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I'm not, actually not going on the, um, uh, the policy government, governance part, which I, I'm going with it, the auditor said.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
He was gonna report, he, if, if we wrote something off of this magnitude without your approval, it would be in the management letter, so it's.
So, so what is the, uh, what is the amount again? Sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand, okay.
Six, fourteen, seventeen. And that's, okay. Then it's three accounts. I guess then the next question is, do we need to, I mean, I don't think we need to know the individuals' names to, to do that either. What, I mean.
I don't think so, I mean.
Right, okay.
I, I, I have a.
Okay.
Kind of a, a note without the details on it, if you can see.
Right, right, okay, thank you. Any more discussion? So I move, yeah, I move to, uh, approve writing off the uncollectible amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents on those four accounts.
A second.
Any more discussion? Open papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set on that one?
Okay, thank you. There'll, there'll, there'll be more, but we'll try to make it, we'll, we'll try to streamline this a little bit when we do it. Uh, number eleven is another one because of what Martin just cited. These are past due accounts and they're pretty high-profile accounts, unpaid school choice invoices. Two thousand thirteen, the law changed that said, um, school choice is for all districts. The board sets capacity limits and, uh, tuition doesn't have to exchange hands. But that, at that time, uh, I know that David, yeah, particularly, and, and Patrick Burke worked with the other superintendents in the area and with the Commissioner of Education, say, hey, we have kids in the program, should be sending them back to their home schools, that wouldn't be right. So we, we got some real, really good guidance from the, um, uh, Commissioner Valasekka back then. And it was basically, yes, exchange tuition until those kids are done.
Or leave.
Until it sunsets.
Yeah, until those students graduate or leave.
Right.
Yes. And so we have kids in the schools now, they're seniors, and, and, um, two of these districts are not remitting funds. We are in a different position than every other of these districts because we, uh, accepted more kids than we sent out. But Champlain, Chittenden Central looked at this and says, yes, we owe you the money, they sent the money. Um, Mount Mansfield only has one student, but they paid that money and the excess tuition, so, uh, but these two districts, um, uh, just, just aren't. Um, there was, David's had discussions with superintendents, I don't know if you wanna talk about that very much.
Well, I, I, I haven't had one-on-one with them. Um, well, that's not true. As of recent, I haven't had one-on-one. I have sent them a letter, um, indicating where they are and what they owe. And I've had obviously several conversations with those that have been in their position, uh, in this case, Chittenden, uh, South. Uh, the Burlington new superintendent, I have not had a one-on-one conversation with him, other than sending him the letter. So just to be really clear about that. But I, I think the letter was very clear around, and it's consistent with everything that we've been saying ever since the law changed.
So what are our options?
So I would, I would offer, David and I chatted about this, um, earlier this week. What I would suggest the board do, and we do not have this listed as for action tonight, uh, but just to provide guidance to David. Perhaps David make a one-on-one, whether that be in person or a phone call to those superintendents. Make it clear that he has brought this to his board, um, and that, that we would like to see some dialogue on this to resolution. And, and potentially, if, if we go to the next step, it would be maybe a, a board-to-board communication about why there is a challenge here. But what do, what do you all think?
Did you, did I understand that you sent Armando's letter to them?
No, that's, that's old. That letter was what began the, uh, continued them paying for those students that were grandfathered into the program, into our program. Um, that was back when, when the law changed. Um, moving forward, there's, there, there was some confusion around the payment, payment in arrears. So actually, the students graduate and you have, you have some additional payments that you have to make. So, um, that was, I think, somewhat unclear to the superintendents. And there was maybe some conversation around, oh, we're all done now. Well, the fact of the matter is, under the pay cycle, there was still some money owed. And again, part of what John's reporting here is in part some of that money. So, um, the business managers or their financial people were well aware of the way in which billing had been occurring. And, um, I think that remains consistent with, with what I have said.
David's maybe correspondence didn't, but I definitely sent that letter. I think it kind of lays out the moral.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Part of it, but that's, that's me though, so.
Everyone got that letter. That letter was done at a time when there was indication that there wasn't going to, they weren't gonna pay anymore. And so that was our actions on our behalf as a district to take our issues to the commissioner then, not secretary. And so we, we think that, yes, the law is changing, we respect that, but people were in here, they should, we should honor the agreement until they graduate or, or leave. And, um, it was after that letter was sent to folks that again, payment continued. And it's really about this ending or, or the, or the finality of this, of this, of this group of students, so.
Sounds like a good plan.
It sounds like a plan. Yeah, I'm not sure what the end game on this one is, but. Right. But it's a good next step. Okay. So David, you can reach out, let them know that we've had a conversation at this level, you brought it to us for, uh, trying to resolve it and, uh, ask if there's some way to resolve it between the superintendents. And then if not, we can determine if a board-to-board communication might help to find some resolution.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, number twelve, I'll make this one quick. We, we had the bond that was issued in two thousand five. Uh, typically bonds, the bond covenant says that you spend the money in three years. If you still have money left, it's subject to arbitrage rules by the IRS. So the idea is to prevent, uh, organizations from issuing a bond and then using that money, the income from that money for their operations, which had happened in the past, uh, some places, not here. Anyway, so we had to keep track of all the money we earned on this thing for, um, eleven years. And so we closed the account in February and, um, got an arbitrage calculation done. And, um, because we're part of the Greater Bond Bank, uh, the, the bond was part of maybe six or seven other bond issues. The Bond Bank had another, uh, arbitrage, um, vendor who calculated earnings. And so we had two opinions that we don't owe anything to the IRS. So there's nothing to do now except on the business off, business manager's shelf, there's all the statements and the, and the reports there in case it's ever asked for. But I know our auditors, they're very concerned that we did it. And the IRS, if, if they, they review bond issues, they see they're still out there, they would, they could come and check that work. So we're good, so.
Any questions for John on this one? Beautiful. You were right, John, that was quick. Item thirteen.
The next thing is the, uh, Bond Bank, uh, will issue bonds. There's a application that is ninety percent done that I've been working on with the Net Art, Artin to get in by, um, it'll be submitted Friday. And then the Bond Bank will go through their, um, underwriting, uh, just to make sure everything's in order before they go to the market. They, they mix our two and a half million dollar bond with others across the state. And so this is more a heads up that there'll be a, um, in mid-June, the board will be given, um, the, the bids for the bond to accept. In, in other words, they'll go to market. We were thinking that the net interest cost was gonna be around two point nine percent with the Bond Bank gave us back in December, or January, I guess. So this is coming. Robert Fletcher's done an opinion, he'll make sure we're set legally and we're fine. We, he, he went through the whole process. But, um, then the bond will be issued, sold in June, the bond proceeds will be coming in July. Uh, I don't know if you remember, we did a resolution so that we could spend money now, uh, back in March, that we can spend this money now and be reimbursed, so I think we're all covered legally on this. I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Any questions?
And then the last thing is leases, um, there's, we lease a lot of, lot of equipment here. And, um, I just wanna show you here what's coming up for, um, for your consideration in June. And once again, this'll close in July. So there's only one bus this year for, for our stewardship plan. And the, the, um, facility guys have a tool cat that it's seven, eight years old, I guess. So, um, they want a new one. I told them they had to turn the old one in, 'cause there's a lot, a lot of maintenance there. So we, we, we do equipment over five years. And then Chromebooks, laptops, et cetera, are listed and they'll be over four years. Um, and the Stewart's, Stewart's, uh, IT department has been gathering this information with the principals and, and that kind of thing. Uh, that, that, getting that kind of input to know how many we need. Chromebooks for special ed educators is, is a new thing. And this is a, uh, this is the first time that's shown up here, but we've, we talked about it quite a bit and make sure that they had some access. Some of our, our pair of professionals didn't have access to email and that kind of thing.
It's not, it's not the teachers, but our professionals who work with kids, also allowing them to have the same equipment in the classroom so they can follow along and not be over the kid's shoulder, working with the kid on that computer.
Creating a better sense of privacy for some of those children, so.
John, you said it earlier, and Stuart, um, you know, our dependency on the desktops in, in our facilities has significantly gone down, you know. And so at the same time, laptops have come up. So when we, you know, one of, some of the unintended consequences, when you do that, you forget about those that don't have the device, some of our own employees. Yes, we still have them in our libraries, but, you know, they're not, not, not in abundance of them. Um, so, and it also then targets them to have to, you know, go to be in certain places. So again, as, as indicated in the report, this is the first, you know, this is the first phase of, of responding to some of those critical needs.
The last two things on here, one is the projector for the auditorium. You know, when we have a big meeting, it, everything's grand in there and then there's this little, uh, uh.
On the rolling cart.
Yeah, rolling cart in the front. And Andy Pearson has asked for this for, I, I say seven years, maybe eight years. He was, John Everett really wanted it when he was superintendent. He was, John Everett really wanted it when he was superintendent, so the only way to get it done is to release. So, he has bids out right now. And the last thing on here is the student information system, which is in the stretch drive as far as getting a proposal ready to accept. And so, the $75,000 lease is just a placeholder right now. We have money set aside in the '16 budget and the '17 budget for this purpose. We may need to only lease a little bit, so it'll come to light when the recommendation is made. So, right now, I just want to have that in as a placeholder, so you know that's coming.
And maybe that we don't have to lease anything at all. I mean, it's just that we're looking at a variety of products, and some are a little pricier than others, but they do, you know, the kinds of things that we need to do. So, that, of course, would be your acceptance in general of what, you know, is the amount of money you'll accept the company, or the bids, and get to see them and be the people who make that decision in the end.
And this replaces a system?
It replaces the package we use now, which is Schoolmaster.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's an upgrade of a system that is long overdue.
Right, right.
You talk about Andy Pearson, how long he's wanted a projector in the auditorium.
Yeah.
I can't tell you how long it's been
Yeah, it's So, this would, in essence, I mean, I'm assuming the system you have now, you're paying some kind of annual fee for. So, this would be in addition to replacing that fee?
So, as John said, there's money in the funds over two years to pay it out of the general fund, tax, you know, revenues, and that may not be needed at all, but one of the products that we're looking at is, which we're looking at very seriously, is more expensive than that amount of money, and so then we would lease some of the product.
Okay.
It's a way of staying within budget.
We're just holding the place right now, so that it's not a surprise where all of a sudden we come and say, and you agree with us, because again, remember, whatever vendor we go with, you know, it's a bidding process and you're the final decider.
Yeah, okay. So, we're paying, just so I get it straight in my head, so we're paying some kind of annual fee today for a student information system?
Right, and none of that's in a lease right now.
Right, and you're predicting whether it'd be through lease or operational, there'd be some higher number we will pay as a district for a student information system in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, at least the start-up year.
Yeah, so some of this could be implementation money?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And then, finally, it's, I just want to note it now, we've been limping along with a telephone system that was scheduled to be replaced in 2006 when we were going to have that new administration building. And we've been, have excellent service contract, excellent people in my office in IT keeping it going, but it's one of those things about wait till next year. I think next year might be 2018 for this telephone system. Now, it all, you know, change in schools and that kind of thing may affect this, so, but I just want to let you know that that's what I'm thinking. And it'll be, it'll be a significant number, the telephone system.
Those of you don't know, but, I mean, where all of our schools are connected, so you actually four-digit dial in between our schools, all of our schools, so 74, 73, you know, 100 numbers are all in there. We've been really, really fortunate, as John said. We initially thought way back, and I'll say, you know, maybe eight or nine years ago when we had technology with, you know, in the classrooms, computers, we were thinking, you know, voice over IP or on the, near, onto the computer devices was going to be a smart thing. But as you can see, as we migrated to different devices now, or to more mobile devices, it's yet changed some things. So, we, and also, safety and security, crisis response, the ability for renters who are using your rooms to use a phone, an actual plain telephone sometimes is an important component that weighed into, you know, after, you know, 9/11 essentially and beyond, you know, has changed our thinking. So, we're back on kind of a telephone system is, you know, really, really needed. It may not be in the same, in the same
They could still be, it could still be a VoIP system, even though you're not using it on the desk.
So, anyway, we're gonna, we recognize that some things have changed, but as John said, we are probably on some borrowed time on some of our, you know, some of the backend devices that are being used.
And finally, the security camera system, the cameras are actually in pretty good shape, but everything that runs it is worn out. It's 10 years old. So, IT's working on a specification so that we can do that out next year.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's it.
That's all you had tonight?
What?
Just those
You can write off
seven items?
Well, not yet. Not quite, but thank you for your time.
I thought you just thought we needed to get all these things out there.
Thank you. That was great. It was good to get those through. All right. Agenda item 15, master planning and visioning update. I have a couple notes, but are there any direction anybody wants to take on this one in particular?
Follow your direction.
Follow your direction. So, my first was just any board-level feedback on any of the sessions we've had so far. We had one, the most recent one at Chamberlain to turn. I don't know where we are with any of the sheets that were filled out, or just any general board feedback on that session.
There were 13 feedback forms that came back, which I was surprised at how few there were, because there were more people than that at the session.
Seventeen.
I know that some of the people at my table had been at the other meeting, and they were not sure, like, should I, and I, we weren't sure either, honestly, and I said, go ahead and do one if you want, but.
Yeah, and I think the same at my table. There were a couple people, well, out of the six, there were, four had been at the previous session. I think two of them chose to fill out forms and others didn't. But I, just from my table, it was a very helpful discussion, I thought, because it was a lot of people from the Chamberlain neighborhood, which, you know, we had not really heard their voices, even though some of them had been at the previous meeting, they hadn't had a chance to speak. And even though we didn't intend it to be a Chamberlain-focused session, I thought we did get a lot of the Chamberlain, you know, voice in that meeting, so I thought it was very helpful. And loud and clear at my table was, we want our school, you know, even with the noise and even with the other things that are going on in the neighborhood, it's an anchor of the neighborhood. And that was a clear message that I took away from, at least the table that I was sitting at. I didn't get to poll any of the rest of you. There were very few comments on the feedback forms, so I think that those notes that were taken at the table, and I should ask you, David, are those collected somewhere in the main office that I could somehow aggregate those?
We have them. I think we have all of them from all the administrators. They rolled up pretty much that night, so
Okay.
We have that, including, I also have the notes from a meeting with the library group. Again, that wasn't your meeting, but I also had their, we typed up some of their feedback, too, so that came back. Yep.
So, can you shoot that off quickly?
Yep.
Especially to Bridgette and Elizabeth, you guys have been polluting that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I can talk to Delana, too, because I have information that I have borrowed from her that I need to give back, and then there's additional information, I think, that's come in since then to you that I probably need to aggregate in, so we'll just keep coordinating.
I had mostly Central School, one Chamberlain person at my table, Megan Emery, actually. So, I didn't, but it was still, it was a good discussion.
Yeah. I thought that the general, just the logistics of the process where we actually sat at tables and talked was really, really productive.
Yep.
I'm really pleased with how that played out.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it's nice, I think people are much more comfortable having conversations in that smaller roundtable than they are, you know, in a more, you know, auditorium-type seating situation. I think they're more apt to, you know, ask a question, feel less intimidated to ask. And again, I think the administrators also appreciated, you know, just listening and being part of that, too. We got some feedback from them that they enjoyed the conversation and, you know, felt that the interaction between board and answering some of the questions, they have been flow, was really good.
Yeah, and I would commend you on the administrative as well. I mean, at least at our table, it was great to have the input of the administrators and the education professionals that were there in the room. That was really helpful.
Likewise, at our table, it was extremely helpful, because one of the big, really, it was the focus on whether the school stayed or went from the neighborhood, and then the other focus was the fifth grade, the middle school, or keeping it in the elementary school. And Carsten was at our cable, which was very helpful to get his perspective on all of that. And we've gotten nice feedback from the community, you know, in terms of emails and things, saying, you know, we feel like we were actually listened to, and I do like the format, I think, for the other meetings. It'll be interesting to see how it works if there's a much larger influx of people, because that was, that worked very well, because we only had 20 to 30 people there. If we end up with 50 or 60 or more on a weekend, the question is how well that will work.
So, sounds like, at least for the one that's coming up on the 7th, which is Saturday morning, that we want to probably keep the same general process in place? Okay, so, I have a personal question on the 7th, because I'm supposed to move my daughter out of college on that morning. Would anybody like to kick off the 7th in the morning?
I don't know that I'm going to be here.
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, you and I talked about, I wasn't clear who was supposed to, I'm happy to do that on Saturday morning, yes.
Beautiful. So, Martin, you're not sure you'll be able to be there as well?
Yeah, the legislative session may be ending on Saturday. Possible that we might end on Friday.
Make them, just make them.
There's an outside chance of that.
Julie, do you think you're going to be there?
I'm going to be here.
I think Elizabeth is planning on making that one.
I think she's not.
Oh.
That's my question about who's facilitating then at these different tables.
That's right, so that could be problematic. So, yeah, what about the administrators?
Well, you can have the administrator. I think it's really delicate. I mean, the administrator's there to be your note takers. I think what you could do is, if you don't have enough to cover all the tables, we'll, you know, you can have kind of a facility, you know, a person at the table, but maybe can be directed by, you know, a board member who's, you know, we'd like you to open up conversations and specifically talk about whatever, calling that question, calling some questions, I guess, to the table and letting the administrators kind of take notes of what's happening there.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, if you're just driving some of those questions and then let them, or maybe you list four or five questions that you want them to look at?
Perhaps we should have a list of, yeah, half a dozen questions.
So that you, so that you get, so that they get through them, otherwise, you know, we want to make sure we're doing what you, the board, want for your community meeting, you know? And I don't want you to be disappointed because, you know, Administrator One went down, you know, an avenue or not, you know?
I, well, maybe even in the initial presentation, you know, sort of outlined the, you know, four or five major questions, because I don't think it needs to be a whole lot of different questions that we would like people to address, and then have a list of them on the table. I'd just say the community at my table, I can't even claim that I really facilitated, other than making sure that we, there was one question at the end, I wanted to make sure that we got, they drove the conversation, and every attempt to steer it in a different direction got taken over, and I think they're strong enough opinion that that's probably going to be the case again on Saturday, as long as we have the list of questions that we want feedback on. I think people will kind of take it and run with it.
Yep. Do we want to try to get a few of those questions out right now while we're all together? Because that's just a couple days away.
I don't have them in front of me.
I don't either.
Well, I think, I mean, the big question is really, you know, what is of the options? You know, which one do you support and why? I mean, that was what we spent a lot of time on, and then the, really, that comes down to closing Chamberlain or not closing Chamberlain was where the focus of the conversation was at our table. I don't know if we want to get into specific wording of the questions.
No, I wasn't thinking that. I was just thinking, because I wasn't necessarily thinking so much, I think when you said, you don't have them in front of you, I wasn't necessarily referring to the questions that we've collected to date, but what are the questions that, as a board, we could want to make sure
That we get feedback.
Are being pressed in that session.
We'd like your thoughts on, you know, we'd like your feedback on, you know, something that guides, and the principals certainly, your administrators can take it from there and take the notes based on that and help, you know, make sure people take turns in some of the facilitation.
I guess, well, if it's parents, you know, one way of perhaps approaching it, which I'm thinking a little bit differently on this, is understanding from the parents, but it can be from anybody, on what we're not providing sufficiently in the school, and how the different configurations would assist
Yeah.
in providing whatever's missing.
Another thing, I think that, I think we started coming out of this conversation just naturally was, what are the things out of these various scenarios that are absent in your mind as you're listening, like, well, why, I don't know why I'd do that, and, you know, what are the things that make, that are not clear to you about why we're even suggesting a scenario? I think that in itself, if we get some of that feedback, it's like, I'm not even sure why you're suggesting this. Why would this even be an option? And understanding which ones of those they have the biggest questions on will help us to at least know what answers we need to provide. So, I'm ready for Park City, but there's something there, I think.
Yeah, and I mean, that is what came out at my table, was the discussion at Central that the classroom are too big, or, I mean, there's too many kids per teacher. At the same time, in Chamberlain, they're too small, and, you know, there's not that kind of flexibility, and that was really identified as a problem. We talked about how different configurations could help with that, or if there were other ways to address it besides building a new school. So, that's kind of how, and the noise was an issue that we talked about on Chamberlain as well.
I think there was some pretty significant discussion at our table, Pat, around option five and the potential benefits or negatives about that option as well, so I don't want, I don't think we want to limit our conversation to option three, is what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah, it's any of the options that should be right, to the three options.
Right, I think we've been trying to be good about what we said last time, and also say, but we're not dismantling our process.
Right.
We want to complete this and get as much feedback before we move to the next decision stage.
But, I guess, to dovetail on that, since we were at Chamberlain, and it sounds like at many of our tables, talking about Chamberlain.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to be at Rick Marquette, and there are some issues that are going to come up in the future around Rick Marquette, and maybe those are some of the things we should address while we have the opportunity.
How do you feel about potential city center buildup around this school? Is that a problem? Is that not a problem for you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's good.
I mean, I think it's okay that they're different.
Right, I think so, too.
Because you are collecting questions and you are going to work to, you know, you're going to work to respond to the questions that are gathered, so I think there's some level of consistency that will weave through all of this, and, you know, you're asking
Yeah.
similar questions.
So, David, do you expect all your, I'm just trying to figure out our number of bodies, because if we're really short, then we need to fit
No, I won't have all of the administrators. I mean, they have some, you know, I have some conflicts, you know, family-related conflicts. Again, this is Mother's Day weekend. I've got some people traveling. I'm not going to have them not do that.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
I think I'm going to have, help me, Stewart, probably four or five, four or five administrators.
That's fine.
Stewart's not there, he's traveling, but I think four or five, including me. I didn't sit down and do that. I certainly can. I was just trying to, you know,
Load around.
wandered around, tried to keep my mouth quiet, you know, and not be called on, but
Yeah, I'm going to try to get out and get over there, but I think it's unlikely. And it may just have to be, you know, you kind of ride with what happens. If there's a bunch more people than you can do that with, then you just kind of change the format a little bit.
Yeah, and we could combine a couple tables and have one of you facilitate a larger group, or we could even call on somebody whom we know who's in the table group to ask for some, you know, you know, helping with facilitation and, you know, taking notes, answering the questions.
Yeah.
And, you know, you all know pretty profoundly that there's some people that would be happy to do that, so, you know, that kind of will have to be on the call.
Yeah, okay.
I just, as we set up the room so that we're not scrambling, though, I don't think we can really set up more tables than we have note takers and that kind of thing. We should be conscious when we're setting up the room that we're then not scrambling to re-just.
The problem with that is if you have, you know, if you've got to load up a table with, instead of eight, you've got to put 15, now you've got a different dynamic around that table where it takes from, I thought it would be involved, now I'm not really going to sound off, so.
Take stronger facilitation.
Maybe that's an exaggeration, eight to 15, or eight to 20, you know? When it gets to that 20, it's like a lot of people we know kind of start to shut down, which is, I think you're right, but you mean, we'll do some conscious decision-making on the numbers.
Yeah.
You folks, plus the administrators will determine our tables, and then
Seven tables.
And then we can put some chairs just in and around.
You have to get 70 people for that to be a really serious problem.
Okay, it's going to be a nice shift. It's supposed to be a nice shift.
We hope so, but. So, a couple things this time, I wanted to just add the, I don't know if you
I've got more.
So, I want to, you know, I did say to you last time, you know, part of the noise mitigation matter, and so I did meet with the airport manager and his assistant, and we went over the rules and some of the opportunities connected to the FAA and Part 150, which is, it's sound mitigation measures, federal funds that it might be available to either soundproof or, you know, go towards alternative locations, deferred cost. They have a, they had a consulting firm that had worked with them. They're in the process of getting them in touch with us and giving us more and giving us more specifics around what we could and could not qualify for, so, I hope actually within, within the early part of next week to have some information, they were very helpful. They didn't necessarily say it was a given, at least on money to defer a location, they definitely felt like because we're within the sixty-five decibel sound level and very close to the seventy, Chamberlain School, it's likely that it would qualify for significant upgrades in windows to triple pane type windows and sound, to increase insulation in the ceilings, to possibly air conditioning the school, which means you don't open windows, et cetera, up to including also money that might defer, so, that was one that I just wanted to give you an update on, I'll keep you posted on that as I, you know, more information becomes available, and the other was just, you know, I've been traveling around, as you know, I've been, I've gone to all of, and some of you have come, and I appreciate you coming to some of the meetings, I've done all of the staff, with the exceptions of the high school, Pat and I were scheduled to go, but we had a snafu in the schedule, and basically, I've had to condense what I did for you way back from almost, oh, never forty-five minutes, down to the thirty minutes that I've had with staff, and so I shrunk down that presentation, I put a copy in front of you tonight, which is really a compilation of what I've already shared to the, you know, I shared in my long report, but actually I got quite a bit of feedback from some of you around, you know, being able to articulate that much quicker. So what I've put together here is again, some facts that we know that are surrounding us, some of the unique examples, again, these were embedded in the longer report, page three was kind of a better way of getting at kind of the rationale that I went through in good, better, best in any one of the scenarios, and put a number to that, and then consistent with pulling in just some of the information from White and Burr, so trying to provide a little bit better summary, so I could get at that, and I did share this with the library group, and I've shared it with the Chamberlain group, also, again, under the umbrella that the school board is looking for your feedback today, Delina on my behalf sent out feedback forms, the same feedback forms that you've used at the community meetings, and we've sent that out to all of our, our school staff, with the exception of the high school, because they haven't got it yet, so I just wanted to give you that update.
Yeah, and I did wanna chat about this chart a little bit further, the one that has the scorecard essentially, and, you know, I know that what has been presented as far as the educational benefits, you went over them at the March twenty-second meeting and such, and I had gone over them a little bit with you before, we had gone over them at a previous meeting as well, and I know that at one point I asked, well, how do these things rank relative to each other, and perhaps this is the effort to do that.
Mm-hmm, that is.
But I find some real difficulties, some real problems with the way this is presented, because if you look at it, I mean, it appears that our status quo, if somebody was just gonna look at this, it would appear at, if you look at the status quo, that we'd be negligent in not doing something about it because it's ranked so low, and, you know, that academic excellent and consistency, it's one of five, and that's really raises some serious problems, particularly since our three elementary schools are ranked in the top twenty, is my understanding, you know, I mean, they're very good, so how it could be ranked one of five, and maybe it's just a matter of digging down to how this is, you know, I, as I understood it, not, you know, not being an expert in education, I understand, I've heard the benefits of, for instance, one school, but they've never been articulated in any kind of manner where it's four and a half times better than what we have right now, and, you know, I imagine that, yes, it is better, I see that it can be better, but, you know, maybe I was asking too much to actually put numbers on it because, because it probably is pretty difficult to really judge how much better it would be, so, any event, so that's kind of one significant issue I have with this, because I don't think it really is telling the story of how different are these five options are. The other is that I really think we're, yeah, the way that this is, process works, of course, and the way that policy governance works, is that we defer to you and your staff as the experts, you know, we're not educators, and we understand that, but, but we also do due diligence as well, and, you know, when we've seen the different educational benefits of the different options, you know, I am differing, and they are what they are as far as what you've provided to us, but I think, you know, when I see this chart, we need to dig down further with you to understand, because, you know, if in fact, you know, we're doing this poorly with where we are, we really need to understand how you derive that, so, so I think, and exactly how going forward, the best approach to do that, you know, I don't know yet, but I think we really need to understand exactly how these figures came up.
Sure, so again, I think, as you said, under the policy governance, you know, I'm clearly the person who's, you know, in charge of the district, and I report to you. I am the author of the document, you asked for my opinion and the options and opportunities, I think you're right around how to quantify where we are as a district, and I would ask you to think about the factors of today, ten years, and twenty years, and so what I'm doing on your behalf is to lay out, today, we're really, really good, but if, what I'm providing in these facts for the future, if we don't, then this is where you begin to see diminishment, from my perspective, you see changes in your scorecard as you go out years based on the factors that we know today, we've outlined some of the factors, we can certainly, you can, community can, challenge me on some of those facts that we know, i.e. the Burlington Airport, the sound areas, the, our demographic data, our open space, city center, and, again, I already said enrollment, our physical plant conditions, those are the components, that when I look at those and I go out ten years and I go out twenty years, that's where the numerical weighting becomes more relevant, very clear to me, and I wanna be real, what we do today, what we're working on today, what we're working on in instruction, and increased outcomes, absolutely true today. We're just getting data back that's embargoed, we can't yet share it, but we know that we're, as a district, we're doing really, really well. Doesn't mean we can't continue to get better, doesn't mean that we can't look to the future to know that we don't go down a road that's problematic.
David, are you suggesting that scenario one on this chart, where its total was a four, is your perception of what it'll look like in twenty years, not today?
Well, I'm not, I'm saying to the future, Pat, that's absolutely right, I'm saying to the future.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but I think the caption says something about the flexibility of the movement, we had talked about that, in other words, it's not a rating of how we stand, it's a rating of what gives us the most opportunity.
With those known factors forward, so I agree.
Right, and that's fine, and I guess that, to understand that this option one of building the school is four and a half times better than sticking where we are going into the future, it's just that we're gonna have to dig, I mean, we defer to you, but, but it's gotta be based on, you know, a rational explanation and sufficient evidence essentially. You know, I need to see where this has come from, I will defer to it, but if it's, if it's not sufficiently supported, then it's, then that deference isn't deserved, but so.
What I would ask you, and I'd ask you, the board and the community, go back to the facts that we know, and it may be that you disagree with me on some of the facts that are currently in play in South Burlington, so if you go to the previous page, you may say, David, I disagree with you that there's a, there's an issue with sound, or I, you know, or I.
No, I don't wanna disagree, I don't think it's gonna be a disagreement necessarily, it's, have you supported, the disagreement is whether you have provided sufficient support for me to defer to that, and that's a little bit different, I'm not gonna question your judgment, but I have to see that it was based on, you know, I have to see what it's based on to be able to say that judgment is fine, and that's, and we don't dig into this level on many other issues that we deal with, but this is a pretty big issue, and this is our ultimate decision, and I, you know, and I've thought, you know, maybe it is four and a half times better, then that may be changing my mind as far as where I've been coming out and saying, hey, you know, this option just doesn't seem.
Well, again, that, I, it's difficult when you're in a place where you're doing such a good job to try to quantify to the future of a vision that is not yet known. Also, I think that the financial forecast of the future, you know, is also one that's rapidly in flux, and so I had talked a little bit to Patrick and probably some of others around, one of the early graphs that I did around the time when we were looking at the funding cap, I don't know exactly when that was, but we had a chart that had three point two seven percented, percent moving forward, which was kind of our natural growth rate, we had the education funding cap coming in at one seven two or one seven four, we gave examples of it at two percent or five percent, and we had a place in there where you started to hit in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, where there was a difference, I think that a lot of this is, culminates for me around looking at what's going to happen there, and that's where educational devalue has to start to happen as a result of significant likely increases that may not pass. Again, hypothetical too, because I don't know if the voters would pass a significant budget increase to maintain, so, again, let me just, let me just stop there. My efforts here, I own this work, I'm certainly the author, I want to, again, I've never tried to usurp your voice, I've only been out there trying to provide some validity to what has led me to think, which was far different than when I came here, far different when then I moved here, I was in a very different place, it wasn't until I began to dig into the facts that we know, the data that we have, and the desire to maintain excellence, that I started to go down this road. So, you know, I pulled this together for, you know, a lot of good reasons, and it has changed over time, part of it, it's been, it's too long, it's a little confusing, so I've condensed, I haven't, I haven't changed the data poll at all, it's all was in, was in there.
I think there's been some unfortunate interpretation, misinterpretation of what you're saying here by the community that saw this chart, which is, you don't think that we're doing a good job now, and, you know, unfortunately, I know that's not what you mean, but I think we need to articulate what it is that we mean when we're presenting this stuff.
So I don't know, I mean, it's like, I don't wanna discount that, what I've almost said to a fault, people have said, David, stop saying how good we're doing right now on that, I mean, I've got it from my administrators, I've got it from other people, stop saying that, because we agree, but it's a place to start, and I do agree with Martin's, you know, the four means like we're not doing very well on a one to four or one to five basis, so, I get that, it is, it is likely needed for me to provide some additional clarity, good feedback from you folks, where I need to explain first to you and then to the greater, a little bit more about rationale and thinking around the educational opportunities now with a future in mind.
So, I mean, I think this, this is very critical as far as really, and it can't just be you articulating this aspect of what we're dealing with. We're dealing with the financial part that's separate, we're dealing with the educational benefits as well, and we're, no, they're not, you know, they're not separate, you know, they're obviously, but, but, but the education, you know, but, I mean, they are separate, but in the end, there's the balance between the two, but we need to be able to really articulate these as well, and so I'm gonna make a recommendation that we have a subcommittee, because I, because I think it's gonna take rolling up our sleeves for a block of time to work with you to really understand this, and then we can share out with the rest of the board at, maybe by the next meeting, but, so, that would, I mean, let me just float that as an idea, just so, rather than in this environment, sit in your office and just really, and I know there's a lot going on now, but I think that this is pretty critical to be.
No, this is critically important, I mean, this is part of my effort currently, I mean, I have been working to get out, you know, and a lot of you have been joining me, so I appreciate that, to staff, and it's not been to convince them, it has been to provide them with information, so that they have the opportunity to then provide you feedback that will help you make a decision on a scenario moving forward, and I will respect that, I'm simply, as your steward, trying to make sure that people are informed and that you're provided, because I work here every day, and I have people who work here every day, to provide you as much information as I possibly can, I'm open to that, Martin. MTSS is where this is derived, and there's a litany of questions that myself and the administrators went through to kind of boil it down to this, which I recognize is complex.
And I guess what I'm suggesting is that, in some of these formats, boiling down is critical, but we have to make sure we're communicating it.
Accretly.
I mean, yeah, we're communicating well, but on the other hand, I think that we need more.
I think that's a good request, it's a good request, this is why we're here, this is complicated stuff, I, I'm not trying to simplify, I'm not trying to make it more complicated.
Well, you're, we have to do both, is the problem, that's the thing.
We have to boil it down to its most salient points, but we need to be able to back that up so that we can have a conversation that has more meat to it at the same time.
So I'm, I'm, I'm open to that, if there are a couple of you wanna, wanna do that.
I'll do that as well.
Okay.
If you wanna, I've turned like this a little bit, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I would just say that, and I know that now there's a little subcommittee, I just, I just beg for focus on the academic and educational part of it, because, you know, there's a lot of demographic information that's been studied, the financial information, we're gonna sit down with Stephanie, you know, as a board and understand, dig into her model a little bit deeper, so that we make sure that we're comfortable with all the assumptions and things that were used, but really just sort of nailing, you know, what are the benefits on the educational side, not the community side, not the airport side, all of, you know, those factors, the educational factors, so that we really flush those out better, and then once we've decided, you know, what the potential benefits are, you know, just how much easier is it to do in option five or four than it would be in the others? Are we talking a huge amount easier to do in those, or are we talking, you know, processes that can be put in place to do them in scenarios one through three? You know, with granted greater expense, but the expense issue is also in my mind, sort of a circular argument a little bit, because we say that we're gonna hit this pressure point based on demographics and based on funding issues at the state level and all of that, but we're not really solving those economic issues with four and five, if the model is correct as it's been laid out, because they're extremely expensive, so we're still gonna run into funding issues, so we just need more work on both sides, so I'm delighted that we're gonna dig a little bit deeper on the educational side.
Let me stop for a second, see if there's any comments from the public at this point.
This is what I would make.
You might do.
Glad you offered that opportunity.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Okay, well, this is, I'm Sandy Dooley, and I, I'm not gonna speak very long, I communicated with Patrick about having an opportunity to speak to you a little bit about.
Thank you.
The option I developed, and it's on the back, I'm not really gonna, and I shortened it, I'm not really gonna get into that.
Thank you, Sandy.
What I did was, I mean, my thinking, I guess, and, oh, I'm gonna see if I have. Just since I went. And I'll just read my thoughts, thank you for the opportunity to make these comments, I would agree, these are the factors that underpin my thinking that the sixth option plays consideration, whether, one, whether or not a neighborhood prospers affects how well or not so well the entire town or city prospers. Having an identified and thriving neighborhood school plays a major role in whether or not a neighborhood prospers. When a neighborhood declines, the neighborhood's population decreases, meaning fewer schoolchildren, the neighborhood's property values decrease, the neighborhood's property tax revenues decrease, the neighborhood's remaining residents are discouraged, and the entire city is negatively affected in a number of ways. The school board's decision-making, along with subsequently the residents' decision-making regarding the configuration of the city's school facilities, is an opportunity that will impact the city's future in more ways than how well we educate our children. I guess this one sort of plays into your recent discussion. To use a financial word analogy, sometimes it is prudent to invest more when there is a strong likelihood that investing more will increase your rate of return on your investment. Now is an opportune time to make long-term investments due to historically low interest rates. The other is what you're going to see.
Right. Thank you very much. So I know, I know the board has seen this, I know the board is looking at it, and I know we've, we've got a lot of things we're trying to move through on this, so we'll, we'll give this a review. Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I think there's a question.
Oh, absolutely.
I was just, goes back a little bit. I might like Julie's comment about when you're speaking with central families on Saturday to, you know, have some focus there. And one question, I don't know if you have brought in, up in any of these meetings, is about redistricting, which is always a fun one, but I think particularly when you're with central, one thing that would be interesting to hear is if people are saying, you know, crowding at central, overcrowding at Chamberlain, if financially it makes sense that, you know, the, the community will have to be faced with redistricting, what do people at central school think about that? Because it's probably the population that would be most affected by a change. And they're looking at that problem. And in order to garner future support, if you do have to do that, it would be good to hear what the community might have to say. So I don't know if that's already, but of your questions, that might be one to ask.
Is it, is it fair to say, thank you, Mark, is it fair to say that in almost any scenario, we are looking at redistricting?
We heard a lot, yeah.
There's a lot to talk about in any.
All right, it's, it's inevitable, I mean, it's not going to happen for next year, but it should be a conversation right now because of our factors at us right now, where our numbers are very disparate between, we've got Orchard and Central, as Monica said, Central, who needs to probably give some students to, to Chamberlain. And so redistricting is, is, is very likely needed to be balanced again.
Thank you.
Before the block of master planning revision, I just want to ask, David, do you have any other meetings scheduled on your end?
Not right now, I'm waiting for the high school. And again, I'm open to any, to board members. I'd rather not warn that meeting. If I, if I get more of you want to come, that's great. But right now, I think Patrick was going to try to make it work, although it's dependent upon the date. We don't have a date yet from Patrick Burke. I hope it's sometime next week, because I would like to send the feedback forms out that you have and allow them to provide that feedback.
I thought there was a meeting of seniors at something, is that right?
Uh, there is a senior lunch, you're right. And if anyone would like to join me for that. May twenty fifth.
Where's that?
At the city hall. It's their Friday noon, Friday noon time, Friday eleven thirty, something like that.
They asked me if you were going to be IDing people at the door to make sure they're seniors.
One other question is, I had some concern that you wouldn't have very many people on Saturday because it's cleanup day. And I just was wondering if you were, if you didn't have much attendance, if you've thought about having another Saturday gathering.
I would, I would expect we, we would deal with that after we find out what happens.
It was a struggle to find days.
Yeah.
It was a real struggle for the district to find things where there were not other major conflicts with district issues. And yeah, it was unfortunate.
Just that tradition goes back to nineteen seventy, so a lot of people have a lot of buy-in to it.
I would be happy to be at the senior lunch on May twenty fifth.
Twenty fourth.
I thought you said twenty fifth, okay.
Let me look again.
Because the twenty fourth is
I did say twenty fifth.
Yeah, because the twenty fourth is our meeting, is our evening meeting, yeah.
This SBDA thing.
Let's talk about that.
We have to come for that, but I don't, so. There may be other things that, again, I've been open to saying if people would like us to come, like me to come and talk, and I've been really open to say, hey, board members, join me. I'll, I'll keep you posted. And if you know other things that
Yep.
people are, would like to, to do that, I think the Rotary is another one that I haven't gotten a commitment on, but maybe.
So you'll send, you get any on your books, you'll let us know?
Yep.
All right, awesome.
Yeah. The only other thing, the, the Grand Isle piece?
Yeah, I was going to, I got two more. So the first one I was going to just bring up real quick on this is where we are with our FAQs. We had, I know there was some work to, you guys, you and Elizabeth, a lot of work in categorizing those comments into basic questions. Those questions have been posted. We have not yet, I don't think, assigned the answering portion of that process.
I was also confused, because you had alluded in one of your emails to an email that Julie and Martin had sent with concerns about some of those questions. And I don't know there was copy on that email. I went back through all my emails, dug them.
There were only two, I think, that were
And couldn't find questions, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll resurrect that again. I'll, I'll work to find that one and get it sent out through Delina and David. And then I think you would also have put in there the suggested areas that would, that might be the right candidates for answering the questions, right?
Each time.
I didn't see your name on any of them, by the way. Just joking, I'm joking. I'm joking.
That was one email from
I'm joking on the record.
He was standing next to me while I was taking
Did the questions have been posted?
The questions themselves.
Not the answers.
Not the answers, the district website, yeah.
Um, okay, so from
And the feedback forms, I should say, from the first meeting are back in the office now, if people want to look at them directly. The ones from the meeting last week will be in tomorrow.
Is there a compilation?
There's a folder that Delina's keeping of
But I mean, does it have like a summary of?
Um, I have not included that in the folder. I can do that. Yeah, I can do that.
And then the other item under this category that I wanted to touch on was the Grand Isle exploratory conversation. So I don't believe we've met as a board since we had that subcommittee meeting with Grand Isle.
At steering committee we did.
No. We talked about it at the steering committee, but not as, as the school board. So, so where we are in that is obviously, I'll just repeat a little bit, that Grand, a group from Grand Isle, Act forty six committee from Grand Isle, reached out to us, had a meeting Julie and I attended with David to just, to determine whether or not we would be interested in a possible consolidation of some form, probably a side-by-side. They believe that some of their towns might be interested in consolidating with us an entire K through twelve. Others would just be the high school level, and they would maintain their own elementary school and, well, K through seven or so in their own districts. We have not taken too much action on that at that, at this point, obviously, because we haven't met yet. One of the things that Dave and I have talked about a little bit is just the first question being if we even have the physical space in our buildings today to accept that population. And I think Dave needs a little bit more time to finalize that. So I think we're targeting that for our next meeting to hear an update from David about where he is on, just confirming that we actually legitimately know what we could do and can't do. Because if it's a non-starter in that regard, then, you know, that's, I think there's a, there's probably at least one scenario where it's a starter, but I think it'd be a big lift for us in a really short window, but maybe not. I think we just let David do his work and come back to us. So I just want to give an update on that at least at this point, because it does obviously affect our planning and visioning for our schools. Any questions on that from the public perhaps?
And you're looking at possibly redistricting, then you have maybe the influx of that. Are you looking at that as maybe a redistricting solution too?
You guys aren't looking at anything yet.
Yeah, it'd be a little bit early for us to ask that, answer that question, I think.
So it's the whole county including Alberg?
It's Alberg, South and North Hero, Grand Isle and Palomont, and not all of them want the same outcome. And again, this is their boards, I think they've got some feedback from their communities, but they would need to do a vote, so as, as we would need to do a vote for this to happen, so.
So like some might want high school only, some might want middle school and high school, and some might want
The way they've articulated, some would want high school and some would want K through twelve.
So those are the two?
Those are the two that we've talked about in this very exploratory conversation. Yeah, very early.
Again, we have, we have a good number of students currently that come down to high school and some that come to our middle school, seven. So it's not without some current practice. But it's far different in, under Act forty six and this type of merger, it has significant other implications, financial implications, as well as board reconfigurations and decision-making, et cetera. You know, so.
Does, have you been able to figure out if we went into this, how many potentially lose students?
I haven't, I haven't, that's part of what I have to do for the board. Add it to another layer of complexity of master planning.
That's right.
Is it a potential loss for us as well? Like if we go, if we come back and say, no, sorry, might they go to Essex? And that's going to be students that we're going to lose in the future that we currently have right now?
It's possible.
Act forty six requires that any, any location that's under nine hundred has to do some things by very set dates. And if they don't, then it begins to get some, I don't know, punitive is it right? But it starts to put in some, some metrics that push harder to, to do some things. So that's, that's in play currently in Vermont with some that are merging like Essex and Essex Junction. And there's many examples where people are at different places.
So, sounds like another robust conversation coming up in the next meeting we have, so hang on. Okay, I don't have anything else under this topic, anybody else? All right. We'll move on to item sixteen, setting the agenda for that meeting that we were just talking about.
We need to take thirteen off, because I don't think we're in a place yet to do that.
Correct. I agree.
Okay, item thirteen, we will move off to the June first meeting potentially?
So this, this needs, go ahead, Bridget, I'm sorry.
I also thought back up an executive session, I thought we had talked about taking legal matter, real estate proposal off, since there's no real estate proposals that were actually, did we even talk about that last time?
For the May eighteenth meeting?
So, yeah.
Is that what you're suggesting, that we don't, we don't need it there?
Well, we had mentioned that before, because there's, well, maybe we need to change the title of it, because it's not a real estate proposal that we're necessarily looking at.
All right, we'll find the right language for that. Okay.
This, this was a start time of five, not six.
Optional five.
That's right, optional five. We would warn it for five o'clock.
Yes, Joe. I have a couple of suggestions.
Please.
If it helped the timing, fundraising is, it might, it would make more sense on the June meeting. We could push, move that to June fourth, I think, is, is, or
June first?
June first, yes. And under the bids, normally they're consent agenda, but we will have the bids to the board for the track and the field at that meeting. So it has to be an action item, because it's over half a million dollars.
So a separate item?
Separate item, yeah.
Are we going to have, are we going to get the monitoring reports, both two point one and three point two in advance?
Well, I need to do that, that's part of my, my three two is me. I need to do that before, I don't know, I have to look.
Okay, so.
It's slighted, yes, but I haven't done much yet.
Update on school safety and campus security, should that be a section? I mean, it can be now, it's my understanding, it'll be more.
We typically stay high level, you know.
That should be
We typically
There's not a component that we might need, I mean, I'm just
If you want to talk about it in executive session, you know, where there's particular procedures and protocols and procedures, if you'd like to be updated, we could do a little bit in the executive session.
I don't, yeah, we've got a pretty full executive session too, I think. Yeah, yeah, we do.
I generally just go over some of the kind of campus activities and what we're doing.
We should hear what he has to say, and then if we decide, we could go, you know, we could go to the next meeting for the rest of the detail and executive session, right? Or is that not okay?
No, no, that, that would be, I, I have a feeling that we're at a point where we probably should hear a little more detail.
Right, so maybe we do need to do that.
It doesn't necessarily, I mean, it's
Maybe we need to push it to the next meeting.
Or, yeah, it doesn't have to be
Well, I think it's good to have an open session, because part of, you know, a lot of what happens in our society is around, do you have a plan? You know, where are they, you know, are they practiced? You know, is there frequency of the meeting? Do you have crisis committees? You know, it's a lot of that stuff. It doesn't get into the, the specific details, you know, that would be disadvantageous to do in public. I think that's an important piece. I do think from that you would, you could give some notes and say, I'd like to know more about if this has happened or what you're doing in this regard, or whatever the case may be. And we could certainly give you, I could give you some updates on that.
Maybe we should put that on a future agenda item. A lot of things going on.
You want to just push it all to a future agenda item? Or you want to do an update here?
I think it depends if you have both sections of number twelve ready. I mean, you can decide if you need to shorten it, but
I think it could, the whole thing could go at a time when we have time in executive session to dig a little bit deeper.
Again, this was, this was a future agenda item in the past that I've worked into the, to report, so
Right.
That's what I'm trying to do. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to talk a lot about it, but I do think it's important for our community and our parents to know that we do in fact have a plan, and we do the following things to make sure we're, whatever, so.
But I do, I do know that about five years ago, we did an inspection, you know, to, on one of the, because one of the audit, one of the reports has a component with respect to security, right? Again, I don't remember which one, but, but, and, and actually, I remember that I did this audit and this would be equivalent, and it's probably something that's due.
A direct inspection or something you could do?
No, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying some sort of a little bit deeper dive for us in our due diligence, and I'll just have to go find out what, maybe it should be in conjunction with that monitoring report.
Fine, Martin, I, I think you're, it's
It could be asset protection, is that one, is that one?
I'm not exactly sure where.
Do you want me to try to figure out where that should go? And just put the whole thing
Would you, would you really like to make sure we address it soon though? Or, again, it was on here, we're trying to be, I'm trying to be diligent, you know, moving some things.
I figure it out and then rip it back
Yes, ma'am.
to David, so he can do the
Let me know, if I don't hear back, I'll, I'll do a brief overview of it in my report and
I'll put it on my to-do list.
Some of the army agenda or?
Keep it on. Unless we hear from Martin that, you know, there's more detail you want, it's fine.
Okay.
Man, I, I do, I can really think it's important that parents, moms and dad, they often wonder.
Okay, any other changes? Okay. We're good on that one. Moving on to item seventeen.
Can we just add in there an update on the grievances?
In the future?
Oh, what we, yeah.
The district.
And that would be an update on kind of like the metrics about volume of grievances, that's about the level of detail.
It's in one of the monitoring reports, so we should just look at where that is and
If you want to just add it to that, that's okay, it's just
I don't know where that, when that comes up again, so let's, let's just
Yeah, because I think we were looking at doing it, keeping an eye on this more than annually.
Right, so
That was the only thing about that.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So tie it to it, but, okay. Anything else on future agenda items? Okay, moving on. Minutes of the April eleventh and April thirteenth, any adjustments needed to those?
The only thing I'd say is on April eleven, I was just looking out for Martin. It says, Mr. Lallan agreed to work with the board administration to assistant answering some of the questions with regard to the frequently asked questions.
I did?
I think he did, but I think the general discussion was that we were going to divide up the frequently asked questions.
I don't remember it that way, Bridget, no.
I don't remember volunteering, I think, I think So what the heck was I thinking? I must have been delirious.
I thought that, I thought that we had said that we would divide them up, and Martin said he was, he was very sporting in saying that, yes, he was willing to do that.
Yeah, can you make sure in the minutes for tonight that, that I denied, made a sound mind at the April eleventh meeting when I suggested I would do that?
I don't believe I was at the April eleventh meeting.
Oh, that's right, you were.
Good catch, Stuart.
I looked at my calendar just to be sure, but I was pretty sure I'm not, I was not there.
Two places.
Any other adjustments to our minutes? All right. Do we need, I keep forgetting on this one, do we need a motion on this one or not?
For the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just for the consent, right?
All right, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as, as altered.
No, we do them by consensus.
Yeah, we just usually do them by consensus. So you want action off there, don't you?
I, I do, because every time I see action, I'm thinking I, I do, because every time I see action, I'm thinking, I need to take action. Do we put the word consent in there or something like that? Otherwise, I'm just going to keep doing this, it's going to be like Groundhog Day every time.
I like that parenthetical consent, that's a good idea.
I have nothing if not a rule follower. Okay, the consent agenda.
Consent, yeah. We have some new hires here, Kevin Marakami, Alison Perizzi, and Barbara Urick. These are individuals that are currently in our building, and are, we're wanting to have them remain, so it's within the budget, all been, all there, so, okay, the recommendation, and then the asbestos abatement and summer 2016 projects at the high school and middle school are also within there.
Any questions on any of the consent agenda? Not, we'll move right along to agenda item 20, any questions on accounts payable orders 39 or 40? Then those are approved with consent. I will now accept a motion to adjourn.
So.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Really?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, and if both. Have a great evening.